To call this regular meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees to order. We'll have a roll call and then please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff? Present. Brazil?
Present.
Carrie?
Present.
Noel?
Present.
Riser?
Present.
All here, also present is Township Manager Parker.
Let's join in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to adoption of the agenda. I know there is a proposal to add an item to the agenda.
I would like to move K1. But is it too late to do? Now the time to do that?
Yeah.
I moved K1, which is the Compensation Commission appointment, from New Business up to the Consent Agenda.
A second.
Oh.
Okay.
But she's.
And I'd let her know that. She's gonna little talk at public comment.
You're okay. You're okay with that.
Okay, so we have a motion. Why don't we just deal with that motion first? The motion to move that to top of, or to the Consent Agenda, item K1, that's the Compensation Commission appointment. A motion by Riser, support by Carrie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any other proposed changes to or additions to the agenda?
Yeah, I propose to place the approval of one full-time deputy clerk position to replace the one part-time deputy clerk position to New Business.
I'll second it.
K4?
So we have a motion by Flintoff, support by Noel.
And the materials for the item are under reports.
Is there further discussion?
Just sometimes things go on as discussion items, sometimes they go under possible actions.
Possible action.
But it could also just be a discussion and not an action.
That's why it's called possible action.
Making sure.
Because we don't have predetermined plans, but yes, my intention is to act through action.
Double check it.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Other than my rap report was uploaded to the packet?
Yes.
Okay, and you probably didn't read it because we had issues.
I didn't see it. I looked today.
I was ahead. I did it the next morning, but there's other. I was proud of myself.
Okay.
But it's there for anybody to.
Is anyone gonna move G2 and G3? I am okay with them. We're being on consent. But there were some questions from residents on those issues.
It would be a chance to address those. I mean, the board has received more information from our IP director that answered the questions, at least to my satisfaction. I don't know. But I think for the benefit of the public.
Well, I'm probably believing not consented unless people really want to have a discussion of them at this board meeting.
I don't want to.
Okay.
Well, how could it be addressed under reports if?
Sure.
Sure, I guess we can.
Because, yeah, Chris, in case some questions progress.
Alright. With that, is someone prepared to move the agenda as amended?
Move by Riser.
Move by Riser, support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, our agenda is approved. Communications to the Board of Trustees.
They're included here, and I added those that came in the last couple of days from Bob Sykes, Mary Gillis, Jonathan Greenberg, Rob Patterson, and Ryan Maple.
There was only one before that, right?
In a small.
Yes, in a small.
Okay, I read all.
Okay. In that case, we are at public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Brazil, will you serve as our timekeeper? If you are present in the hall and would like to speak during public comment, please come on up and.
Judy at, Judy Monk at 5554 Gallery Park Drive. I want to thank Mr. Hathaway for nominating me for the Compensation Commission. But I want to give a recap of what you can expect if I am appointed this evening, which I think because we went to consent, okay. One, fiduciary responsibility. You can expect me to be responsible with taxpayer money. Secondly, you can expect me to have a commitment to data and research. One of the very informed studies is done by MML, and they do both a wage and salary survey. It's excellent. And it gives her plenty of data and research, but there are many others, as an example. And the third one that you can expect is that I will always come prepared, based upon those facts and based upon information that I gather. What you can not expect is that it will not be a performance review. It is not meant to be a performance review from everything I know about a Compensation Commission. And you can expect me not to have it as a performance review. You're all elected officials, and therefore you have constituents, and they, in fact, provide your performance at the ballot box. So in closing, I thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Is there anyone else present in the hall who would like to speak during public comment?
Evening, everyone. First off, thank you for talking with Chris Bailey about my concerns. Like I said, wasn't intended to necessarily say there was anything wrong with the options we were selecting. I just want to make sure people are aware there are other options in the community. Secondly, I do encourage you to support Jessica's motion to add a full-time deputy clerk position. There's a full-time deputy treasurer for both of the full-time offices of the township. I think it makes sense to have parity. There's a lot of work to do in both departments. There's a lot of work to do around the township in general. It's why we continue to add positions and why our budget keeps increasing. Ultimately, it's just the right thing to do. I do realize that after looking at the draft budget documents, the general fund is spending more than it's receiving next year. So that is somewhat concerning, but I think after also reviewing the budget documents, there's some things that I've already reached out to Manager Parker about some of my questions. Some of the numbers don't make a whole lot of sense yet. And maybe it's my mistake in understanding some of them, but some of them just look like they were either omitted in error or improperly placed in some of the different GL items. Do encourage everyone to look through the budget. I know that's coming up at the next meeting, not tonight's meeting, but it's very lengthy. It takes a while. And admittedly, it's a little bit complex, especially with a lot of capital requests. One thing that I did find interesting in the budget, I didn't know was going to be a project, is Park Road getting a roundabout. That was a surprise to me. I hadn't heard anything about it, at least at this board before. Overall, there's definitely a lot of good ideas in there. Also, look at what the HVAC costs are. I realize that maybe a sustainable HVAC system is a more costly endeavor, but $750,000 for this size of a building where many of the ductwork and everything else is already ran and possibly only minor portions of it need to be repaired, but just do air handling units is quite expensive even in this day and age. Thanks for your time. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Ryan.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment?
David Reed, disappointed Sciop Township resident. I'm disappointed to see that the manager has removed the the request for deputy clerk from the 2425 budget. Happy that it was re-added, but I don't understand why the manager removed it. Apparently, this decision was based on the manager's goal to have a balanced budget. With the proposed general fund balance of almost $7 million for the upcoming fiscal year, I'm pretty sure an additional $20,482 will have little if any effect on the budget. As a retired deputy clerk, I speak from experience. The clerk's job, as defined by the state, is the most complicated and all-consuming job in the township government. The need for a competent, dedicated, well-trained, and full-time deputy is paramount. Especially in these days of fraudulent claims of election fraud, or excuse me, of claims of election tampering and violence, threats of violence to election workers. This job is not easy, and in the years when there can be four elections, it's, there is, there's no downtime. It's exhausting. As is a year even with three elections. Very difficult. I implore the board to approve the clerk's request and get the search for a deputy clerk underway immediately. In keeping with the philosophy of always providing a solution when you bring a problem, we should prove that mark. I would propose allocating $20,482 from the treasurer's budget to the clerk's budget. This money could be moved from the deputy treasurer's salary and allocated to the deputy clerk's salary. As I understand it, the deputy treasurer has no formal job description, no measurable work product, and has been derelict in her duties at least three times in the last four months. The treasurer was absent from the board meetings of October 24, 2023, November 14, 2023, and January 23, 2024. The minutes of those meetings do not indicate that the treasurer, the deputy treasurer, was present to cover for her boss. I think providing equity in these two positions, equity in the salaries of these two positions is long overdue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present? I see there is.
Tim Boyd, an active and informed Sciop resident. When you think of all the dysfunctional decisions Supervisor Hathaway has made over his term, helping give Sciop Township the nickname Psycho Township, I have a question to ask. Is he doing it again? Let's start with a bit of history. The supervisor doubled his salary after the Compensation Commission had already been set. This led to a lawsuit against him. He hired an attorney after stating it would not cost the township any more money than we were already spending on attorney fees. It has more than doubled what we pay attorneys. This attorney stated that he makes more money with dysfunctional township like ours. You don't say. He denied Administrator Raleigh's expert advice in efforts to hire Raymond Robson back in the spring of 2022. This may have been the straw that broke the camel's back, leading Administrator Raleigh to cut ties with Sciop Township. The supervisor's lack of taking sound advice is disturbing. Finally, after almost two years, this reconfigured board saw the benefit to hire and, to finally hire Raymond to help out. The early board had 15 Open Meeting Act violations because a supervisor didn't like what Clerk Flintoff was putting in the minutes. It got so bad, we had to hire a transcription service to do the minutes. How much does that cost us? Then the supervisor removed Clerk Flintoff's statutory duties per MCL 4175A. Some of these duties have not yet been fully reinstated. He called in sheriff deputies to meetings with the deputy hanging back behind my chair. He was, was he afraid a mature woman was gonna hurt him? He's blamed his email ignorance on a fellow female board member requiring the sheriff to investigate. Email gate much? We have a FOIA that, where the supervisor tells another past board member that he will never surrender to Jessica. What do these four incidents have in common? They are all behaviors and statements against women, against smart and strong women. Oh, wait. He also disliked what Mary Gillis was doing with the Township newsletter because she only wanted truthful statements in it. Back to my earlier statement, is he doing it again? So here we are. Tonight, we have to go to the report section of the board packet to see the clerk's request to hire a full-time deputy clerk. This position is extremely important with this year's many different election needs. The supervisor has repeatedly removed the clerk's agenda items using his position over the agenda as a weapon. Why isn't finding a deputy clerk a new business tonight? Well, you moved it up a little bit, it seems like. Is the supervisor using the agenda as a tool to keep out issues a clerk needs addressed? Is this payback to the deputy clerk? Is this payback because he couldn't keep the deputy treasurer as his deputy supervisor? Is the rest of the board going to allow this topic to languish as a side note? He campaigned on moving Sciop forward, and much of what he has done, especially when it comes to women, is accused, disrupt, deflect, deny, setting Sciop back so many times over the past few years. This behavior needs to stop. Please allow Clerk Flintoff to post the job for her full-time deputy clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any more speakers? In that case, let's turn to those who are participating remotely. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township resident. As a representative of Sciop residents for Rational Government, I will need five minutes tonight. I wrote to you, to the board, about purchasing policy issues and questions. Please answer those questions. In page, in the 108-page budget, there is a section suggesting we pay Carlisle-Wortman over $600,000 this year, and we spent $400,000 with them last year. For $600,000, we could have a whole internal planning department, let alone just a planner. This township wastes so much money on contractors and consultants. David Rowley's words should be etched and engraved into each one of your desks. If you weren't so affluent, you would already be bankrupt. Every one of you should be shamed and terrified by those words. Nowhere in the budget was it suggested that we put services out to bid. Why? Also, nowhere in the budget was there a section for OHM or Wasna Engineering or Plant Moran? How much money are we spending for each of these contractors? Also, in the budget document, it says the fire department has an ending fund balance this year of $2,766,097. Nearly $3 million. How is it that last year, Don from the audit company said the fire department was still in debt even after fixing the $1.5 million mistake and therefore couldn't hire three new firefighters? Then they have nearly $3 million fund balance in the same year. I've said many times, the most important function Sciop Township government is, does, is the fire department because they are the only ones saving lives. This budget suggests waiting until after July to hire three new firefighters. That's not good enough. It is an emergency that needs attention yesterday. We need three new firefighters now so that they can begin training. It will take them nearly a year to get up to speed with our current firefighting team. We have hired a lot of people in the last couple of years. It has been over five years since a firefighter was hired. It is tragic that we are losing Anna Kohn and Mary Gillis. It seems to me that both are leaving or limiting their hours because Sciop is a hostile work environment. I put responsibility at the feet of the supervisor. The continuous dirty tricks, manipulations, and personal war with the clerk can only have created a hostile work environment that is unforgivable and a total abandonment of the duty of a leader. With the clerk's request for a full-time deputy clerk having go into her report section instead of being in the normal agenda is just another in an endless list of sabotaging the clerk. Please vote to allow the clerk to hire a very needed full-time deputy clerk. Thank you for the report on the meeting with the tax sanity people who spent nearly $10,000 opposing the recent fire SAD. Jack Knowles, Erwin Martin, and John Boyle have very little to no credibility when it comes to taking care of the fire department. Everything in their suggestions was covered during the extensive Fire Services Guidance Committee meetings. They complained that they didn't know the details. The details were available to anyone willing to watch the recordings and read the fire department's webpage reports. Apparently, they wanted to be spoon-fed the information instead of working for it. Where were they during the FSGC meetings? I was at every meeting. I never saw any of them there. Jack Knowles has a long history of sabotaging the fire department. During his tenure, the building was rotting around the firefighters stationed there. Mold, rats in the walls, insufficient drying areas for gear, rain pouring out of electrical sockets, all happened while Jack was in charge. When it was suggested the fire department needed 1.95 mils just to maintain the status quo, he gutted the 2019 fire SAD down to 1.35 mils. Erwin Martin is complicit with that in his votes as a trustee. Erwin Martin also had the township pay for the conservation easement for his property. So it's okay for us to pay for his needs, but not for him to support the fire department. John Boyle insisted the Sciop Township was shrinking in his first statements to the board. When it was proven to him that his numbers were wrong, he came back a month later and made the exact same claim. Clearly, the claim was more important to him than the truth. These three men are not looking out for the best interests of the fire department or the residents of Sciop Township. The person who does have credibility and professionalism is Chief Hood. I suggest this board look to him for leadership on fire department issues and not people with a proven history of sabotaging the fire department. To end on a positive note, for the second month in a row, there are no payments to my commier. That is progress. Thank you, board, for using our local township attorneys. We have spent $163,137.38 with the attorney the supervisor went to when he didn't like the advice he got from our local attorneys. For residents who are interested in Sciop meetings, we have 431 videos posted and over 26,000 views at the Sciop Community News YouTube channel. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Rob.
Who's next? That's it? Alright. Let's move on to the Consent Agenda. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Approval of Minutes first. The regular meeting of January 23, 2024 minutes. Are there any proposed corrections to those minutes? The only question I had is on page 13, whether it's potentially confusing to have the text crossed out in the minutes that is to be crossed out.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I'll put it in quotes.
And I caught one on page 10. When it might, oh, please, jump right in. Riser asked what role comparisons with other diversity plate. Plate is misspelled the second time in that sentence, paragraph.
Oh, sorry about that.
I'll begin.
Any other corrections? Is someone prepared to move approval of the minutes as corrected?
So moved?
Moved by Riser, support by Brazil. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. That brings us now to the Consent Agenda with the addition of K1. I would move the Consent Agenda. Moved by Riser.
I'll second.
Support by Noel. Please call a roll.
Per our rules of order, we're starting tonight with Hathaway. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil? Carrie?
Well, no, I didn't get a chance to talk, but that last item regarding Westview Way, was that taken care of?
No, we, let me.
Yes, in the sense that we talked about it and that we can explain maybe during reports.
Okay, but it's on the payment of the bill, so if we approve that, then you'll pay that bill. So if we approve that, that means that we're paying that bill in terms of going back and looking at, you know, the limit because the bill is legitimately due. You look at this.
Okay.
And we owe it to them. That doesn't mean that there is more investigation needed into that SAD.
I'll make a note of that. Okay, thank you.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yes. Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda adopted, 7-0.
Okay, that brings us to reports.
So now we can congratulate Judy.
So, yeah, and I want to thank you, Judy. It's so nice to have a new person engage in Sciop Township and especially somebody with the experience that you have. Just really appreciate your stepping up, so thank you.
Forward to serving our view. Thank you.
See you in 2025, right?
Be that in the meantime.
That's good to hear. Good to hear. We have plenty for it.
Okay, are there additional comments? I know the treasurer, when we get to the treasurer, there's something that you have to highlight. You want to speak to this at all, or?
Well, just that your mind report through the fourth quarter, each of you just received.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
And I want to say it'd be good to have this season over with. The tax collection. It's been interesting this year. A job, if I didn't have a full-time deputy, I'm not sure I would be leaving three last week's receipts.
Why is this year different for this season?
It's just interesting checks we get in, half-written, and, you know, we try to contact the people. It's just one of those times. It happens. But I am good now.
And you appreciate having a full-time deputy?
Yes. Of all that we have.
Yeah.
I see what you're doing.
Just a couple items.
Sure.
I'm gonna.
Okay.
Sure. A couple updates. First of all, there's an election on February 27. This is our last meeting before that. Some updates, we've issued 2,927 ballots already absentee. I expect we'll probably issue about 4,500 or 5,000 total. Our precincts are up there along with early voting. I want to remind everybody, early voting starts this Saturday right in here at 9:00 AM, so we'll be here for 11 days straight doing early voting, nine to five, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, including Presidents' Day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Monday's off, and Tuesday's Election Day polls are open from seven to five, so encourage everybody to vote. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters. They're putting together a special outreach session for Precinct Five at Sciop Community Farms, trying to increase voter engagement. It's an area of our township where we kind of chronically struggle to get more voters engaged, so the League of Women Voters, Mary and I are participating in an event there this Friday night to try to get folks registered. I also just want to publicly thank all the staff and everybody's flexibility. Chris Bailey is skipping a trip to Florida in order to be local in case we have any IT problems. Brandon, Kevin, Christie, Fran, everybody just really pitches in and makes it happen, so I just want to thank everybody for that.
Okay, Lockalpine Sanitary Authority, is there any report for that?
I think that you gave a report the last meeting we met.
Yeah, not yet.
No new information?
No new update until we meet in March.
Parks, Parks, Preserves Committee?
We're meeting tomorrow.
Ah, okay.
Can we lament the loss of our staff? Leah is on person.
Who wouldn't staff? Oh, yes. Not because she's passed away, but because?
No, no, because she's gonna be doing something more related to apology, so we wish her the best.
Didn't want anyone to draw the wrong conclusion.
No, she's gonna be working all over. And then with respect to LPC, we ranked a couple of properties that we visited kind of a week or so ago, and those are applications related to conservation easements. There might be a request to acquire a conservation easement that comes to this body once it's been vetted. There might be a request to acquire a conservation easement that comes to this body once it's been vetted by, uh, by council. So stay tuned for a future request or recommendation, really. They don't spend it before it does. Uh, recommendation for the acquisition of conservation easement, when and if that's ready for board review.
And Planning Commission?
Uh, we did not meet last night. Uh, wasn't sufficient agenda items.
And Kelvin?
Well, I'm going to have an update. But I don't have it tonight because the meeting is going to occur tomorrow. A Zoom meeting with EPA, um, other stakeholders in Washington County. So I'll have a Galvin update in a week or two. So I'm wondering, um, do we want to have any discussion on this? Our meeting regarding the fire. Issue.
I think we should.
It's, oh, I see.
The reports.
The written report, sure. Why don't we do that right now?
I think, I mean, this was a joint effort, this report. Jessica and I revised the first draft. Mark chipped in for this one. Um, so it, it does reflect all of us.
I was glad we had the meeting. I thought it was positive. Um, and, you know, just wanted to report out transparently for the public, um, what was discussed and then. It really seems like, you know, the board, the ball's in our court. The board needs to determine. You know, if we're gonna take a step to try to go back out to voters. To fully support fire in EMS and if it's going to be this year. Um, I would presume, you know, we've discussed the possibility of having a transit question on the August ballot. Um, so it would be fire for November. Um, but I mean, it's really a question for the board. Do we want to? Go for it. Um, the alternatives are, uh. Few and far between, besides going back out to voters in order to get the level of service, so.
Could this be a discussion item in a work session before the next March fifth meeting?
That, that, so, so I, we can't, here's what I think would. We, I'll say me, but we, what we kind of conclude is like, if we're gonna do this and do it, let's learn from our past mistakes. And what needs to kind of happen is we kind of define as really just a, a standard kind of structure of a, of a proposal. So somebody could go there and understand the why, the what. Why am I, you know, what, what, what am I, what's my payback? What's the cost? Maybe there's a menu of items. If we do this, you do this. If you do this, you get this. If you do this, you do this. Some kind of formal, very formal version. I know we had a lot of that data. This, I think this is one of the residents' point. I just don't know if we. Gathered in such a way that was very consumable. So we had to make it really consumable in one kind of comprehensive document with all the supporting data underneath it, make that all available. In addition to that, we'd have to put together some kind of very thought-out, cost-effective. I don't know if we call it a marketing campaign. We get, I think we need to get the public involved this time, the pro, people on our side. Maybe they do a. Pro-fire type thing. I know that the township is very limited in terms of what they can do from a marketing perspective, right? Other than present the facts, like the answers we can do zero. So the all those have to kind of happen.
Yeah, but we need to gather and discuss this and then if we're gonna move that way or not, or whatever.
Yeah, but to me it's like, that's, no, no disagreements. That's binary question. The question, I think the bigger question is. If we decide to do this, someone's gonna have to take that initiative out of, create that initial draft proposal. Whether that's Andy or one of us, you know. Keep getting that question asked a lot. Somebody needs to put that document together and then we solicit out to the board, say, hey. Here's this, here's this, here's this document, Julian. What do you think? Make your edits. Everybody makes their edits and kind of incorporates all those. And then we have something for the board to discuss. And we've kind of gathered everyone's thoughts. We've got it all kind of in, in a one, one contendium of a document in a very structured manner. Then again, it's not a consumable for us, but it's consumable for residents alike. And I think if we do that. That increases our chances of success of a, whatever the number is that. We come up with more, more meaningful. And I think also, by the way, that also has to also include all the, what were all the alternatives? So when we made a decision, how thoughtful were we then? Did we consider a used fire truck or maybe the station smaller? Maybe the structure better on steel versus brick? I don't know. Whatever all those things are, those all had to be kind of thoughtfully considered. So that's another component too. So that, this needs to be like, is it put together in a companion of a document with a very strong structure to it.
I think that if we do reconstitute a committee. We, the board needs to give clear direction to the group, to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's, oh, sorry. When are we going to get together and figure this out, though?
Well.
Because we can't do it in a little discussion. It's a big topic.
It is a big topic.
And I, I do think Kathy's right on the direction is, is level of, I, I think of it in terms of level of service. Like, what kind of level of service do we want to go for with our, with our fire response? I mean, there, there is the, the framework, um, offered by the Fire Services Guidance Committee. There could be other frameworks for it, but I'm just using that with the steps. Where we were presented with the various steps and there's costs associated with those steps. And I think that this board should determine, you know, what level of service do we want? And, you know, there's a pretty big line between, you know, do we want to go for the second station? Um, which I believe we need. I don't know if we all do. I, I, you know, but we need to determine. That's what I mean by level of service and then kind of give some direction to a committee. Okay, how could we fund that?
And I do think we need more discussion than. We have than what we have time for tonight. Um, I think this is a serious issue and I think we have to consider some of the comments that we heard. In this meeting with these people. They had some valid points.
Yeah, so when are we going to do that? Um, you know, I had a, a good conversation with Matt Harps and he. He, from his observation of other communities, what they do is they meet before their, their board meeting. And then they go over the agenda or it's a special meeting. So when they get into the meeting, it's not. Ending at ten, eleven, twelve, one, because we're, we're combining work sessions and board meetings together and it's just not working. So if we could, and we're all, we're already here. We already know what a board meeting is gonna be. So if we. Show up, um, an hour before and then have a fifteen-minute break until the next meeting, something like that. And we just need either the supervisor to call that or four board members.
Well, we, so our schedule is, right, our next meeting is Thursday, February twenty-ninth, dedicated to the budget workshop.
And let's keep it just for the budget.
Tuesday, March fifth and Tuesday, March nineteenth are our next, uh, regular board meetings. Um, each of them start at seven o'clock.
Jess, and if the, let's say we do choose to, um, for a November election ballot question. There are certain steps that have to, um, timeline, uh, to get to the ballot question, to the county or.
Yeah, so we would have to act by July thirtieth. But that's, that's like final action by the board. July thirtieth to place on November and it's April thirtieth to place on August. So we're gonna be, you know, handling the bus transit question first in April, I would imagine. But, but that's final action by July, um, for November. So, you know, last, last time. You know, we placed it on the ballot by, we had a special meeting in January of twenty twenty-three dedicated to this topic. We placed it on the ballot in March of twenty twenty-three and it was on the ballot in November twenty twenty-three. So we're on a more constrained timeline. We still have time. But we, I think, need to know if there's, you know, the, the political will to, to try to move this forward.
And with thought to pass on, listening to what Mark was saying. What I felt, the language that was put before the people. There was too much in it. It needs to be simple so they can understand it. We understand a lot of terms because we work with it. And Andy needs to be the, the person that directs. He knows what he needs and he needs to be a big part of what do we do first? We can't do it all at once. And that's kind of the feeling people got. They want to do it all at once.
Kind of, Donna, one of the things that I forgot to iterate is, when, as you create this document, the last document you create, it should be the last, even though it's the very first. Thing that you read is the executive summary. The executive summary is basically just what it sounds like. It's a summary of all the other stuff you're about to read. And you keep that literally very simple. It should be no more than two pages. And people always get anxious when they get five or ten. Well, it's no longer, it's a summary. It's a document, right? It, it kind of forces you into the discipline of summarize this for a person and the, the things that interest them. Well, hey, you mentioned this budget. Oh, let me understand more. Let me go to the budget section. Hey, you talked about the building. Let me go to the buildings, whatever that might be. But those are all linked, if you even want to, in that summary. But you are encapsulating all facets of that in this two-page document for the people who want to keep it simple. Because if you can't understand the executive summary, you're not gonna understand anything else. It should be. Again, I always say it's something my grandma could read and she would go, okay, I get it. All right.
Everybody out there has to understand it as best as we can do.
Right, you, like, you're talking to a fifth grader, is what they always say, right?
Whatever.
Township Manager Parker, it seemed like you had something to add.
Um, I was, uh, just going to, uh, state, you know, I, I do agree. That we should have that type of review, something pretty extensive with the board and flesh out what the options are. But I also think that, um, uh, Chief Hood could provide the leadership to compile the information. Maybe do some outreach, um, go back to the committee, the Fire Services Committee and do a number of things to, to present some options. To the board for consideration. And that's something that could be done now, between now and the time that you have. That meeting, uh, it would be a good use of our time.
Okay, yeah. When would you recommend we then meet? How much time do you think the chief might be?
Um, you know, I would suspect probably about a month, thirty to forty-five days maximum. I don't even know if it would be forty-five days.
Yeah.
And speaking with him, uh, he thought to a great extent he could. Present that information, put together the options, um, perhaps, um. Mark could work with them to get it into the format that he's discussing and bring that back to the board.
So maybe March nineteenth?
Yeah, that, that should give him enough time.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, if we want to make a commitment of when we, that's a regular meeting. We're planning to, um, targeting adopting the budget on that night.
Say, do we really want to load something as big as this on the same meeting?
Well, it would be before the meeting. Is a, a worse.
You'd like to call, call for a, a special meeting at six PM that night? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, so, yes, and well, um. So the nineteenth, we're adopting the, the budget, but we're having the public hearing on March fifth. And so by that time, we should have everything ironed out with the budget. So it would just be yes or no. We need that hopefully by that.
So hopefully we'll.
I felt interrupted. I was finishing what I was saying, not you. Okay. Um, we've had some informal discussions in the group about. How we might reconstitute a committee. And, um, Mark and I had talked about it a bit. Joyce and I had talked about it a bit. We've talked a little bit. The. One topic that came up in our meeting was to have a smaller committee. And a committee no larger than five was proposed.
Really?
Yeah, you wanted four, I know, but he actually said five.
Who are you? What are you thinking, Kathy? I'm thinking.
Name names.
A smaller committee, a smaller committee would be beneficial.
Who, how many do we have? The last committee was at nine? Do we have nine?
What was it, David's? It was, David was the chair, Bob Groden was vice chair. What was there? Seven?
Seven or eight.
Yeah, seven or eight.
So, and we talked about the consideration of only one board member and that one board member being Mark.
Is that right?
Like a layer.
I'd do it if nobody else would do it. I'm okay if it's not me. I will, you will not hurt my feelings, though. But I think David should be on this board. I have a hundred percent. We haven't asked him. I, I want.
I agree. It, and in fact, I spoke to him earlier this evening about this. So.
Why not seven?
So, well, I, I think that Joyce, Joyce, Joyce has a good idea of having the chief reach back out. I mean, to, to committee members and shake it out. I think it's great, Mark, if you want to take leadership on this. I think honestly, honestly, the, the timing of it was that we started the fire service. The board gave the Fire Services Guidance Committee the charge. And then, um, John and Mark and Gillian came on board. So there was transition. So I would just say that there's, you know, the board was changing as the Fire Services Guidance Committee. Was doing its work, but they met every week, you know, and if for any board member who hasn't studied, you know, the report. I, I will say again, it, it was the best researched township proposal I've ever seen. So I want to thank David, Mark Perry, um, Joyce, I would say we'd probably need PM Gap to sit in.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we don't have Mark Perry anymore.
Don't be a resource as part of that process.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and by the way, the whole reason this whole fire thing came up is, again, we wanted to get one of these three, as you know, from the. What do we call them? The sanity group? I'm not sure what they. Thank you very much. One of those three to, 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 you know, let's make them part of the, part of the solution, not, not, not part of the challenge. They verbally, uh, were fairly steadfast that any group of five, at least John Boyle was. You were in the meeting, Josh, you were there. They would, that they would not participate. So that's how we came into the number of five. So, okay, fine, if that's, if that's your reason for not participating. I don't know if that it is or it isn't, but if that is true, then great, we'll keep it to five. So we're gonna at least take that off the table.
And you're even larger than five is what?
He said he would not participate. I said, fine, I'll step out.
I understood.
I'll step out, you know, but obviously Andy, Andy should be there. I think definitely, uh.
Yeah, Andy would be, uh, actually the support, like the staff person, kind of, you know, leadership.
Not the committee.
Okay, I guess so. I guess it could be a staff support. Yeah, I suppose.
Yeah.
So I, I, just so you guys, I, I have no strong opinion at, at all about who should be on this, other than one of the members from that group. So the other three or even the other four, whatever everybody feels, I, I'm okay with.
Here's the thing. I don't want to do a repeat of what we did before. And I know you're saying, Jessica, that, well, we had defined it a certain way. I think the board has to look at that.
Oh, I agree. I don't, I don't think this board has, I don't think the seven members of this board. All have a, have the, an even understanding of the issues. I think, I think having Andy come and, and present. So we can all get up to speed with the same information. And then I, I would say what, what I don't want to see is send a committee off to say. What do you think's acceptable to the people who organized against this? That is not my question. My question is, you know, what, what's gonna meet? We, we have to, you know, provide some direction to the committee, like. We want a second station or something like that. Some direction. Otherwise, we're not gonna get, you know, good people like. David and others, you know, who worked so hard to try to bring up the level. We gotta give some direction to whoever's working on it.
And that's fair. That's, yeah. I just don't want to repeat what we did before. And for a few minutes there, when you were talking, I thought you were saying, well, we did this before and we have this information. And the Fire Services Report, well.
We do.
Okay, the research is there. I don't want to do the same thing that we did before. I want us to approach it differently this time.
Sure, I just don't want to throw out six months of some of the best research. So people certainly build upon it. But I'll, I'll say again, I mean, it was down to all the future developments. You know, COLAs, everything was, was built in there. Now, if it needs to be tweaked and improved. But I just think it would be unfair to say it was without a, a basis.
I don't think anyone's saying that. What we're trying to. What, what's, what's that? You know, it's like, what, what do we need station-wise? What do we need personnel-wise? And how do we, how do we make that ask? And how do we get that? What should the ask be and how do we get some?
Right.
Well, well, you support by benefit, right? So what's the ROI? Keep going back. We gotta have. Be a very concrete, definitive ROI, especially if it's data-driven, then nobody can argue about numbers. When you argue about emotion, well, I feel like it'd be safer or feel like this. Well, that's.
Well, then, none of that was there.
I'm not suggesting, and I, I think to Justice's point, we have a lot of this data already and may just be the way it was structured and organized. Or there's some people who always want to take, take the data and manipulate it to whatever they're. Or there's some people who always want to take, take the data and manipulate it to whatever their agenda is too, right? But at least let's put it in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, I guess in a consumable format, I think that's just the trick, a very consumable format.
And update it, because it's over a year old.
Yeah, and, and update it where, where, where it makes sense, of course.
My March nineteenth, it's, I'm here at seven o'clock, it ain't gonna kill me to be here at six o'clock, if we need to have a special meeting, I'm game for that. I don't know if we could need to call that tonight, or if your, if the subcommittee needs to meet again and then come back and say we want to.
I think we should kind of call it tonight.
Yeah, let's call it tonight, so it's set in stone.
Does that allow enough time for Andy?
Yeah.
It should be.
He better scramble then.
Yeah.
Andy, Andy can, Andy can do it.
Actually, he, he has ideas and he has the information, I think what he'll be doing is kind of putting together the options, maybe reaching out to get. Other information from residents and the.
So is there a presentation?
Before that is brought back to the board on the nineteenth.
We can determine the agenda for how we want to use that time, but we're, basically, we're agreeing that we're gonna have a special meeting starting at six, preceding the regular meeting, uh, March nineteenth.
So I'll, I'll call for a special, make a motion to call for a special meeting at six P M. on March nineteenth. For the purpose of hearing and discussing a presentation from the fire chief.
Or, or fire department funding, or whatever.
Uh, you don't have to be that specific.
Funding, fun.
Just fire.
Funding, funding, fully funding fire and E M.
Supporting fire services, sure.
Yeah, I like that better.
I, yeah, I'll second it.
Alright, so moved by Flintoff, support by Riser, all those in favor say aye, aye, those opposed, okay, we have. Dealt with that question of special meeting on March nineteenth for the fire part, okay, um, next up on our list here. Is township lobbying efforts, and I can briefly say that, uh, we had some success, um, we met. Um, with, several of us met with the chair of the House Appropriations Committee. Um, our lobbying firm, G C S I arranged a meeting, um, and, um, I think. The takeaway, um, and manager Parker, you can. Uh, correct me if I've got this wrong, but it seemed like the takeaway from that meeting, um, and, and our fire chief was part of that discussion. Was there is a, a, a good opportunity to possibly secure a direct. Um, some direct funding from the state, but it's contingent on, um, our local legislators. Our rep, our, those who represent us in Lansing, um, you know, sort of advocating for that, and that hasn't yet happened. So, uh, one of the things that, um, I think came out of that meeting was it, if, um, we want. To try and secure some state funding to help offset some of these capital costs that we were trying to cover entirely through the, the. Ballot proposal last time around, um, we have an opportunity to do so, but the, the more residents. Who write to our elected representatives, asking them to advocate for that, um, the better. And this is, we have a sort of a window of opportunity for that right now. The roads advisory committee.
And Will, can I just say one thing on the lobbying, I, I would love to get to a point when we, um, adopt the capital improvement plan. That that capital improvement plan ideally would include, you know, anything we plan. To work on in the next six years, including anything we're gonna go to our lobbyists for. So I, I would just say that I think would help kind of direct board efforts when talking to lobbyists, that if it's. On this, um, list, um, then it's something that we've all discussed, deliberated on, and all concur our priorities.
Roads advisory committee?
We met last Wednesday, we had a really good meeting, it was a lot of fun, we were, we accomplished a lot, we have a lot to do. We're working on the sad policy, the sad primer, also the next, um. We went over the roads of, for the road commission, the agreement, we, um, hopefully that's finished. Let's see, what else, we're working on the next, uh, at a plan for the next round of funding, which will be, um. Twenty twenty-five, but we have, we have to have a plan and figure out the roads and the needs of the roads and which one comes first, I mean, not just one, but. So on and so on, um. Our next meeting will be March seventh at six thirty, if anybody wants to attend, and February fifteenth, everybody should be aware of this. So, Road Commission is having a, a meeting, a Zoom meeting at eleven A M., so that was two days from now. On the Ziller Roundabout, the Z Miller Roundabout.
Ziller, that's called, that's cute.
Ziller, okay, um, because that's gonna be shut down for ten weeks while they're, and. You're gonna have to go around the faraway, the long way, yeah. Yep, they're, they're already out there marking things off, I drove by there the other day, and then after that's complete, the Road Commission will begin on Jackson Road. It's gonna be closer to the fall, and that is gonna be a lot of fun, too. So I'm gonna keep saying this, so everybody knows, because you know, it's gonna happen, they're gonna say, I didn't know about this, and then, and complain.
So, Gillian, what, what is the Park and Z Roundabout in the capital plan?
Well, I don't know why it's in the capital plan, because we should not have to pay for that, that should be under the Road Commission, so they have funding. At, at least my understanding.
I, I would, and I wasn't sure where it came from.
Okay, so part of that, the O H M. Study that we approved ninety-five thousand dollars, that's part of the study, and O H M needs to provide a report for us. Because it was either a four-way stop or a roundabout, and there's different, I don't want to, I don't want to give the plot away. Um, that's up to O H M, but this is what, that's what that is part of it.
Um, is Matt Parks watching right now?
He is.
Oh, is he?
Do we want a quick report from him right now on that?
Is there anything actionable?
No, um, I, I, I think we should, what we should do is schedule O H M to come and, and basically present the work that they did. Um, at, at, at our direction to provide a sort of preliminary engineering assessment of Park Road. It does involve the roundabout, but that is, 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 uh, Gillian pointed out, a, a road commission project, it's not a.
But there's over five million proposals.
I, I'm not sure, I didn't see that, I'm not sure. Why it's in there the way that it is, I think that's a mistake, but, um, the, the, um, yeah, so we should schedule a time to have them come and give that. Presentation, if people have a question for Matt right now, uh, it looks like Trustee Noel does.
I could not have a specific question, but the dates of this project, just general overview, I mean, that's all.
I, I think it's pretty sketchy, I think it's pretty sketchy at this point.
No, it, it's just the, um, the study, the, the report of the study that there's no action yet, we have to know what is in the report first.
Yeah.
Remember we, this was back.
Yeah, we authorized them to do a report, when they're done, they'll come back, and.
Yeah, it's, it's ready to be presented, we just have to schedule a time for them to present it that, you know, sort of makes sense, and. Um, so we can do that, I, I, I was thinking, we wanted to sort of protect our meetings until we get the budget approved. But perhaps, perhaps in April, we can have a presentation from them on that.
Can you wait that long?
Yes. Well, it could swirl, driving the capital plan.
Yeah, and, you know, as part of the budget review, you know, it was my plan to, uh, invite, uh, O H M.
Oh, well, maybe we can do it as part of that.
As we talk about different projects, so you can ask questions directly to them.
So on the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Okay, is that, will Matt, will that work for you, since you're out there somewhere?
Well, we, you know, we have the twenty-ninth, and then we should wrap things up March first, so there's two options there, but. You know, as part of the review, I'm thinking that we will request that they participate, if, if Matt cannot do it, perhaps, uh, one of the other. Members of his team can be a part of the discussion.
Yeah, because we shouldn't have money in there for something that we wouldn't be spending, okay.
But I, I think that number is, that's just strikes me as being.
Matt?
I, I am here, I'm, I'm always watching, um. But, um, yeah, I, twenty-ninth will work, and yeah, that number is high, and there's a strategy, and probably what makes, what would make sense to me is that. We could present, uh, just preliminarily to the R A C., and then potentially do a, a board presentation, but. Particularly with that project, it, it mostly focuses on the paving and the trail, uh, extension along Park Road. To coincide with a developer paving that's on schedule to happen this year, but then. The intersection work also, uh, we spent a lot of time with the Road Commission on various alternatives, so. There's a lot for you guys to digest, it's probably not appropriate to get into all those weeds right now, because we have figures and a whole presentation prepared, so. We can do that whenever you guys are ready, and it's been ready for a while, so.
Yeah, and you, you know what, Matt, you're right, um, we've been waiting on the Trailwoods. Um, what they're going to do at the other end, so we've kind of forgot about you, I mean, this, so sorry. Um, but it's in there, so I'm glad we brought it up, okay, yeah, thank you.
But I'll, I'll, I'll hold my calendar open on the twenty-ninth, and I'll talk to you guys in a little while.
Okay, thanks. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a question, just something the way you said it, Miller Z, that roundabout. Are we paid for that?
No, no.
The way you mentioned one of the other ones, I thought, oh, time out, it's not our roads.
No, no.
But they are adjusting the pathway, it's part of that, right?
Yes.
They're doing something, yeah.
Probably have to, yeah.
My understanding is it will make it actually safer for pedestrians and cyclists, once the roundabout is there.
With the sign that says run fast, I don't know, it scares.
I think that's probably what it is now, um, well, can I turn to you now, uh, township manager for the transit and bus advisory committee?
Oh, sure, um, at the last bus advisory committee meeting, we, we did not have a call-in, so. The committee met as a committee of the whole, which worked out in terms of providing information, um. Asking questions, um, getting reports, so I thought the meeting was, was productive. We have a meeting coming up, um, this Friday, the sixteenth of February at two o'clock P M. And, um, during the meeting, uh, we're gonna be discussing, um, potentially having a survey of the riders. That use the system, and, uh, we're looking at getting support through, uh, WAVE and A, A T A. To help us with, uh, putting together the survey documents, so I was really encouraged with that.
That's great.
Um, in addition, we had talked about also, uh, developing, um. A community engagement plan as far as how to conduct, uh, more outreach as far as, uh, getting suggestions and. Having, uh, perhaps focus groups to assist with giving us a better understanding of what we need in, in terms of transit. And then the third item on the agenda is a discussion related to, um, options for service enhancement. That may not increase the cost just by virtue of making adjustments and changes with how we conduct business right now. So those are the three major items we'll have on the agenda for this Friday.
Who's on the committee, and I'm sorry if I forgot.
Uh, Kim Moore, Jan Culberson, myself, um, supervisor Hathaway. And then, uh, Chris Chang, uh, provides staff support, A A T A provides staff support, and SEMCO does.
Okay, SEMCO, okay, thanks. We've also had some input from WAVE.
Yes, and WAVE, yes, with Kim and the director there as well.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And so Joyce, do you think it's still realistic that we may have a proposal by the end of March or beginning of April?
Well, I'm optimistic that we can meet that, that deadline, uh, I think with the survey. Um, we're gonna look towards leadership from, uh, A A T A, because they have a public relations arm as well as WAVE. And, uh, with their assistance, we should be able to get that done.
Okay, can you remind me and the public, what is the, um, what's the millage right now in terms of mills, and when does it expire?
Is, is a half of a mill?
Point three five, I think. Thank you, it started at, at point three six five and has come down a little bit. Yep, and it expires, um, well, that, that was the last year.
Spires this year.
Yeah, this year. So, in order to.
Continue bus service, we gotta make a decision.
Yeah.
We've had the last.
Collection already.
On that millage, so right now, we're, I believe, right?
Correct.
Yeah, this is the last year.
Right, so we're not collecting any more on that village. Managers report.
Oh, I do not have a report tonight.
Okay.
Other than transit.
Do we want to allow some time for discussion of the issue we earlier talked about, um. The items that were in the consent agenda, have any some opportunity for discussion of those during reports, do you want to make time for that?
Sure, sure.
Are we talking about the K four one?
Um, Chris. Uh, the, the technology question on the internet service.
Thank you.
Chris did put together a report, and since he's here tonight, um, I'll ask him to maybe comment.
Yeah, sure.
About the report and answer any questions that you might have, so people can see you.
You can be like, I've seen this kind of guy.
Yeah. The guy in the chair.
I T. people like to be on camera, there's nothing.
They just like to watch everybody.
Uh, all right, so for, uh, G two and G three, that is, uh, getting internet service, uh, at the fire station. And increasing internet speed here, currently our internet speed is a hundred megabits up and down over fiber connection that also serves the fire station. The connection from South Township Hall to the fire station is fifty megabits, so the fire station can't get any more than fifty megabits. Um, you think about what you're running at home through your local provider, Comcast, Wow, whoever, these days you're probably getting two hundred. Megabits down, then maybe, uh, ten, twelve up, um, your home internet service will be, it's called an asymmetrical service, where your download speeds are much. Uh, faster, two hundred, one hundred megabits, as opposed to your upload speeds, um, because you just don't need that past upload at home. So we're proposing, or have now voted on, is increasing the speed of the, uh, internet here to five hundred megabits to better, um. Uh, serve, serve the needs of the township staff as, again, back to your home internet for downloading, you know, a hundred, two hundred megabits. You have family four, five, six, maybe, here, um. That one hundred megabit line plus the connection to the fire station is serving twenty to thirty people a day, so it's not really up to stuff, so. That's part of the decision to move the connection up to five hundred megabits here, and also get the fire station their own, um, two hundred megabit connection. There, uh, another part problem is that last summer we lost the generator during the power outage, the fire station had no internet. Um, because they were dependent on us, because of our problems with the generator, they had nothing, so we're trying to get a situation where if. We lose internet for whatever reason, we'll actually have it routed back to the fire station and vice versa, if they lose it for whatever reason. Then they're going and coming through us, um, it's a failover, uh, so the business of the township can be continuously run. Regardless of one person having a problem or another person, and so what we've done is chosen two different vendors, one is Comcast, who is already here and we're already currently in a contract with. Uh, the other is, uh, one-two-three net, who has, um, their fiber run up to, uh, uh, the road commission. Sorry, I get my directions wrong, road commission over here, um, because Ryan, uh, you know, he presented, um, a local company. Uh, to consider, and, um, I'd read about this, um, person who'd done this a couple of years ago, and I, I thought this really admirable. What he done, getting fiber at a low cost to people in an underserved area for, for internet, fantastic, but. His focus, from what I've been able to read, is on fiber to the home, and looking at, um, what we want for a professional organization. We're looking for service level agreements, um. A large network that is fully staffed and supported twenty-four seven, a managed service where. They monitor our internet connection, where when you're at home, if your internet goes out, you're calling up Comcast, you're having to swap out your boxes. Do love that, with a managed service, they keep an eye on it for you, they proactively come out and clean out fans, replace equipment when it's, um, ready to go. A big part of the cost of this is actually running a fiber line to a building, it's not cheap. Um, again, Comcast is already here, they have no, um, construction cost. Uh, and, again, for the fire station, the one we've chosen for them is right over there at, um. Over the county, uh, um, Road Commission, thank you, and so they don't have that far to go from their. A location, uh, to, uh, the fire hall, any other vendors most likely may have much higher construction cost. Uh, for example, years ago, my old company, we were looking at bringing Comcast fiber to our building, and to go. Roughly distance from the start of our driveway to the end, from where Comcast equipment was to our building, they wanted twenty-five thousand dollars upfront, or they wanted. They wanted twenty-five thousand dollars upfront, or they wanted to roll that entire construction cost into the contract, so, um. That fiber construction really does drive a lot of the price of that, either you're gonna pay it upfront, or you're gonna pay it over time. And I'm looking at, um, the person that's doing the fiber to the home, uh. Uh, I can't remember the name, it's coming off the top of my head, but, um. His location, the closest business one is either, um, kind of down by Culvers or down at Baker and, uh, Marshall. And so regardless, he would either have to run a lot of fiber down Marshall and down Zeeb, or come down Jackson. Then up Zeeb and across the highway, and. I don't see how that's not very expensive, where he couldn't charge us that home bill price. He would, he would be losing money. Or the other option would be to buy service, a bundle of service from someone else, say like one, two, three net, and then. You would have to pay them still to connect to the fire station, have a service agreement with them. And so then we'd be going off one, two, three network through their system, back to his, and then back to his provider, and then out to the internet, um, it's. I, I commend what he's doing, I, I think it's wonderful what he's doing for the people in that area. But it's not, um, a company that I think at the moment is capable of handling business traffic.
Thank you, Chris.
Are there any other questions for Chris? If you have some questions up there on the.
Yeah, no, I mean, thanks for the great research and process, I mean, the transformation is happening, and we're just really grateful for all your good work.
Right, and, and I appreciate the questions from the community, because I know these things, but then, you know, and I have to do more research and explain it to you, it, you know. I think helps, helps me in a way.
Want everybody to have confidence.
And, yeah, I, I want people to have confidence what we're doing, that we're not, um, being negligent with the money, that we're. You know, trying to move this township forward and modernize.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Chris.
Supervisor, uh, Rob Patterson does have a hand up, I know it's not ordinary. Uh, that we take questions from the public, but I don't know, I, I wouldn't oppose his asking a question now, while he's still here.
Rob, do you have a question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, it seems to me that in a purchasing policy, putting items out to bid. Is the, the first step in this process. And I understand, Chris, um, your logic in why you chose to do it this way. But if you put this out to bid, the price you would get from one, two, three, and the price you would get from Comcast would be more competitive. Then it's like paying retail and wholesale. If they knew they were bidding competitively, the price would be better. And it seems to me that, um, we've gotten away from a purchasing policy of putting things out to bid in this township, and I think that's a huge mistake. Is there, it, it can't be that one, two, three is the only company available to do this. Um, what other companies are there available to do this project?
Well, so what I did is I worked with other people who go out and get these, get the quotes from the companies to bring me back the numbers. Um, there are other companies, A T and T, uh, Level Three Communications, I think maybe they're kind of CenturyLink now. But the problem is, is back to the running of the fiber line, is they have to be in this immediate area. Anyone who's coming in has to run that fiber to this building. Um, and that's where you get those, uh, very expensive construction costs. Um, part of the reason that Comcast, and they're not gonna get beat out, because Comcast is already here, they have no construction cost. One, two, three net has a very short run to make that fiber work, so they have, um, you know, very low construction cost. Anyone else is going to have to. Move that fiber a lot further from their location, um, either across the highway or, uh, you know, coming in from the north somehow. I, I understand the, uh, you know, wanting to go out, get bids and stuff, and in some ways, I have done this by working through third parties who shop around for the best, uh, service and price for us.
Yeah, Township Manager Parker.
Oh, I, I was just going to, um, echo what Chris stated, you know, with internet service. A lot of, uh, companies have service areas, and if you're not in their service area. Most of the time, from a residential standpoint, you can't get the service, and I think what he's saying is that with those providers, um, in our service area. Uh, the question is, you know, whether they have the infrastructure in place, or does it have to be installed? In order to provide the service, and if it has to be installed, then who's gonna pay the cost? And will it be factored in to the rates? So I think that was a big part of his, uh, recommendation as far as moving forward, and I do understand what Mr. Patterson is saying too.
Yeah, I'll make my last comment, because I'm, I worked with Chris on this initially, and, and with Jess. Is we wanted two, two different vendors, right? If one vendor goes down, that means both buildings go down.
Right.
We want an alternative vendor, and unfortunately, there is somewhat of a captured market with all, with all these fiber, fiber vendors, just by the sheer geographics of who's there, right? I'd love to have fiber in my, in my neighborhood, and nobody's got it, so you've got Comcast, you don't have a choice, and Comcast knows that.
Yeah.
So it is jack up your race. Unfortunately, until that happens, there is no competitive. To Mr. Patterson's point, I agree that we certainly have things that we can compete on, and can get, we need to do that a little more, uh, uh.
Yeah.
More often than we do now, right? There's some things, maybe it doesn't make sense, but there's probably a lot of things where it does. So that, that's, that's, this is maybe is not one of them, unfortunately, due to the narrow group of folks who can actually solve this.
Thank you, thank you, Chris, let's, let's, uh, let's move on to, uh, our next agenda item, which is, I believe, uh, monthly financial reports.
Um, sure, uh, self-explanatory, thank you to Rebecca Maude for getting these together. Um, our plan is to have these monthly second board meeting. Um, these are current through December, which aligns with, uh, Treasure Palmer's investment reports.
Okay, that brings us. Don't have any public hearings, we don't have any unfinished business, that brings us to new business, we've already dealt with K one by moving into consent, that brings us to K two. That's possible action on the Downtown Development Authority appointment, and I know, um, Chris, we have some people who are participating remotely. I, well, at least, I anticipate that we have some people participating remotely, um, who you might, um, bring in, um.
Is Tim Boggs?
Oops, what did I do? Yeah, Tim Boggs, this is the Tim Boggs agenda items, but I'm not seeing.
Is he, is he in attendance? You don't have it.
That's what I did. Yeah, so I, I anticipated that Tim Boggs would be participating remotely, um, and also Bob Stites is, uh, he was just.
Does he know he's being appointed?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
All right, well, um, in that case, um, I will do my best to respond to questions, um, but, um, I am. Um, as part of my statutory, uh, responsibility to nominate people when there are vacancies on the Downtown Development Authority Board. And so bringing forward the nomination of, um, Tim Boggs. Um, Tim is the president of the company located, uh, Jackson Boulevard, uh, long time, uh, Syo Township business. And, um, I tailored, uh, the, um, appointment, the, the, the duration of the appointment to con, uh, conform to our new policy. Uh, that's why it is what it is, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
I'll just make the comment that I like the idea that we actually have a business person who's part of the business district, I would assume that anything. Most, anything that he would vote for would be good for the district, because it's. If it's good for him, it should be good for the district in theory, although we ultimately have that say, so I kind of like that he's, uh, right there in the thick of it. So that's kind of, he's kind of got my vote based on that. I didn't understand that originally, that he was part of the D D A when I first voted to conserve, but once I found out, oh. That's, I should quit the war, would have known that. So that's just my marks, marks, what we've been.
Okay. I did a little research, I have, I don't have a problem, I know that there is. Uh, he doesn't live in the township, but then we have some others that don't either, but as long as they have an interest in them, where I thought about it, maybe having some fresh eyes. Yeah, we need to do something with the D D, I mean, not the D D A, but the district itself, and maybe some fresh eyes would help, you know, um.
Well, there's certainly taxpayers.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, but he lives in a different, plus he was on the planning commission and Trenton, I believe, and something else, so he has background in government, so, yeah.
I would move that we approve appointment of Timothy Boggs to a term on the Downtown Development Authority Board commencing on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And concluding on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Some support.
Okay, so move by Riser, support by Noel.
I just had a question, what, what is, what are his priorities for the D D A, like what's he about?
I.
I mean, or, I mean, just what's his kind of.
I.
Perspective?
That I can't, I can't answer, um, it would be ideal if he was here to.
Okay, yeah, and I wasn't trying to be unfair.
He did, he did come to a D D A.
Has he been to a D D A meeting?
Yeah, he came to a D D A meeting, he sort of met with the, the board.
Okay, good.
And, um, he, um, he understood when we, when we were putting forward someone else instead, um, that, um, you know, sort of. Wait, but he said he would continue coming to D D A board meetings just to, you know, so that he was informed. On the chance that there would be another vacancy, and then it turned out that there is a vacancy to be.
So he's been engaged as a business owner, okay.
So it didn't scare him off?
No.
Right, that way, so.
And the, and the firm has. Well, he's, and he's been working at that same, that same firm in Syo Township since, um, I am nineteen nineties or something like that, so. He's a long time kind of connected to the community.
Thirty years, thirty.
It's a long drive.
Yeah, if we're ready, uh, can we call the roll?
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flinton?
Yes.
Brazil?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay, that brings us to agenda item K three, um, and Brandon, I see he is here. Um, and this is, um, I'll let you introduce your agenda item.
Good evening, um, so when I arrived here, I learned quickly that we didn't have any sewer service. Um, sewer cleaning service provided to us, uh, this is something that is very imperative to have. Having a standby sewer cleaning company, um, to rescue us during sewer backups. And provide the necessary services of cleaning and televising our sewers, um. It, it's something that we, that we definitely should have, I'm surprised that we didn't have it, um, still happening here. And so that was one of my main priorities, uh, when I found that out, is to get with Joyce and, and just discuss that. This is something that we definitely should be bringing to the board, um, and so. Uh, in the past, we did, um, it did seem like somebody must have constructed their own documents, um, on Sil's behalf, and then. And sent it out to bid on our own behalf, but this is more in depth, we were only doing spot TV in, in our sewers, um, so basically. If they thought there was a problem in that area, we would send a camera down there and, and get a good picture of what's going on in that specific sewer main. However, that's not best practice, uh, that's only giving you a very small picture of what's going on in your sewer system. And, uh, so when I got with Joyce, I expressed the need to televise every foot of our sewer. Um, in a five-year period, um, so that it was economical. Um, and that gives us the best understanding of what's exactly going on in our system. And we can be way more proactive instead of reactive if potential sewers are about to collapse. And so part of that, there's a, it's called NASCO ratings, um, that's, that's how you categorize sewer mains and, and sewer manholes on a scale of one through five. And depending on, um, the condition, um, we will develop an asset management plan with O H M's help. To bring to the board and bring to Joyce, um, kind of like what we need to do and prepare for, for the next five, six years for the next capital improvement. Or if it needs to happen quicker due to the severity of it, it gives us exactly a plan to go on and move forward, so that we can ensure we are taking care of our sewer mains appropriately. When I was in Clio, um, it also became, um. Um, it was also brought to my attention that in order to secure different, um, grants and funding through Eagle. That this kind of information is something that you're definitely gonna have to have, you're gonna have to be proactive on your own accord. You're gonna have to have video of every foot of your sewer main, so that you can ensure that you're doing your best to take care of it. And they're gonna want to see that information, um, going forward more and more when we start applying for, for grants. Um, so, um, that's some of the work, um, that is being brought in front of me today, and the other one is a G I S interface. So, right now, it'd be help, it'd be helpful as a tracking system, so I know exactly what, um, sewer mains are being taken care of. Um, as it develops and further down the road, as we, as we develop it more, um. I can click on each manhole and get, um, an update on exactly the condition of that manhole, if I click on a section of sewer between manhole and manhole. We're hoping to be able to just click that section, I'll be able to pull up that exact video of that sewer main. Instead of having to search through a whole jump drive and, and figure out particularly what's going on there. And that's gonna help with investigating and, and figuring out different problems that are gonna occur in the future. And make it much more easier for staff and, um, staff in the future, um, and so that's why, um. I went and, and bid this with, oh, um, O H M is, uh, they already have all of our G I S information, they've been, um, professionals with us for more than twenty years. They have extensive knowledge in our, in our field, um, and so, um, it made the most sense, and due to the timeframe that we have currently right now. Uh, contractors right now are looking at enormous amounts of bids throughout Michigan or local areas. And, and bidding on this work right now to make sure that they got work, uh, for the year, and so. Delaying it, um, too long is, is gonna put Syo in a position where we don't get the best contractor for the, for the best price. With that, I, uh, I'd leave, I'd, I'd like to bring Matt in, and he can go over the, the bid, um, or the scope of work, uh, in more detail.
Yep, yeah, thanks, Brandon. Uh, good evening, board, um, in your packet, you have, um, a proposal dated January seventeenth. We went through a couple of iterations with this, um, some were larger in scope and some were smaller, um, kind of settled in on this point. Um, really, Brandon did a good job kind of laying out the technical parts of this, um, I don't think the proposal necessarily does. The justice of all the work involved in this, um, we're really trying to find, um, Syo a partner. Um, not just a contractor that comes in and does, um, you know, a spot, spot cleaner televised. Um, going back to like the two thousand and tens early, uh, Syo had a ongoing P O with, with a professional firm that would come in and do annual cleaning. Um, and they would split up the system and, uh, you know, for a fourth or fifth, um, and every year routinely, routinely go down, um. I know some of, some of the board members that are here today remember some of the work that was done on the I N I. Um, some of the lining, some of the work and efforts that were done to dry up the system, and a lot of effort was spent on that. Somewhere around twenty seventeen, eighteen, um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, because Syo was, or O H M wasn't involved in selecting a contractor. Involved in much other than the actual lining work, but that regular televising and cleanings, um, sort of stopped, so. I learned as much as Brandon did when we were brought up to speed on kind of where we're at, and we really are trying to not just find a low-cost contractor, but somebody that is local. Someone that's available, someone that's not only able to do the annual cleaning, but help in an emergency situation like Brandon said, a sewer backup. And then on top of that, you might remember, um, a couple of weeks ago, we were in front of you, um, for the lead, uh, service for the water system. We're also looking for a contractor that can be versatile enough to actually hydro excavate and, and identify some leads, so. We're really trying to put together a comprehensive bid that's not just unit price, that's typical of what O H M does. We're looking for a qualification-based, uh, solicitation. We're also looking for time and material prices, and kind of imagining all the different scenarios that would come up, so we can look at all the bidders. Um, and really pick somebody that's gonna be with Syo for potentially the next, you know, three, four, five years. Um, looking at inflationary costs over those times, um, we're expecting a little bit of back and forth, we may even need or want. To choose to interview a couple of firms at the end, um, this is really, uh, when you get into NASCO rating and P A C P and M A C P, there is a lot of grant funding. So you're deliverable, and what you get isn't just, you know, a contractor going out and cleaning and televising the video and the video product. And how it's given to us can save. The video and the video product and how it's given to us can save Silo money in the future. The better the product, the less time OHM needs to spend untangling it and applying for grants, um, and working with Brandon's staff to do grants. So whether it's OHM or Brandon's staff, we're trying to pick a contractor that's sophisticated enough and, and write up specifications that gives us something that really saves money in the long run. Um, this is something that most municipalities already have under contract. This isn't something special or anything that, you know, Brandon's bringing from another municipality that isn't practiced all over the place. Um, we really should have this in place. Um, and so this sets you kind of up for the next, um, five years. So I guess with that, I'll, I'll be quiet because I'm sure there's some questions, but, um, we're happy to, uh, answer anything. And I think there is an optional task in the, in the version of the proposal that got put in the packet for, um, construction engineering um, and inspection. I really don't necessarily think that ne- needs to be acted on tonight unless Brandon feels differently. That can be wa- weighted on. Also, I do wanna point out, it's a hourly not to exceed. So a lot of these things, there's a lot of options. There's some time built in to vet different options and variable with Brandon and his staff. Um, but if we can get through this fairly quickly, I think our budget is on the high end. And if we don't need it, we won't use it. So.
So this is just for the bid or for OHM to go out for bid?
This is for.
The sewer.
This is for OHM to put together GIS maps to validate the routes, easements, put everything together that contractors will be looking at. And this is probably something that contractors are gonna need several weeks to look at a pre-bid meeting. And then after we open bids, like I said, it's probably not just go to the low cost and make a couple of phone calls. There's, there's probably some serious vetting of these contractors to make sure Brandon's partnered up with. You know, this is who Township is probably partnered up for the next five years. So this is more than just, you know, a simple construction project. That's, you know, five months long and it's over with. This is a partner of the utility department. You know, you guys don't have a vector truck. You don't have staff to run a vector. So this is really an extension of your utility department.
So I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but when the sewer cleaning and the televising, when that happens, that residents that have municipal, um, water sewer are not gonna even know this is going on. I mean, it's not gonna affect our.
So it, it kind of is a loud machine, but most of this is gonna be done, I mean, all of it is gonna be done during the day, during work hours. So as long as they're, you know, working out of, you know, out of, you know, out in the public. And it's still not that loud where it's really gonna affect them if they're doing like a meeting inside their house. Um, to be totally upfront, if the houses aren't vetted properly, um, when the sewer mains are jetted, occasionally, um, there will be some air that's thrown into the sewer leads that may have a toilet kind of explode. Not like explode, but have like water come out of it, uh, and stuff like that. There is, there are those. If, if your house isn't invented properly, that is a possibility. It doesn't happen very often. Um, if the contractor knows what they're doing, that's why it's very important that we vet them out. There's certain, um, amount of pressure that you jet at in order to alleviate that from happening. Um, and so I wouldn't be surprised over the next five years if we do this, that we're gonna get some phone calls. Um, it, it, it does happen.
Yeah, we have example notifications where we have areas too where OHM learned in the past when we did the lining and cleaning and, and factoring when I worked with Eugene Peyton and Scott Martin. We know of some set shallow sewer areas and Brandon is absolutely right, like simple door hangers on the, on the front door that says, leave your toilet lid shut. And honestly, we'll still probably get a phone call or two and then the utility department will go over there and help, help clean up. But it's, it's clean water. It's just, it's just toilet water.
I mean, I always believe in. Well, yes. No, I just, based on my experience, every time I had any bill, whether it's a building or whatever have you, the more you can get done architecturally, the less mystery there is to a, a, a better. Typically, the pricing is gonna be cheaper. See, if you pay a little hole in the front end of something, you get that money back on the packet. So, uh, that's always been my experience anyways. You know, you go with the architect, they give you three blueprints versus they give you twenty-five blueprints. Even though I paid more for that architect who designed that, now the builder is like, oh, I know exactly what I'm supposed to do now. They're not leaving all this, you know, fudge factor for, for mystery. So that'd just be my layer. Why I mean, for something like this, it, it lays a groundwork for getting an accurate bid.
Yeah, I have, uh, several questions, um, in no particular order. How about that? Brandon, are you proposing tasks, um, one through seven for fifty-six thousand? Are you also proposing the task eight, construction oversight?
Just one through seven.
And then, um, Chris, with the GIS, um, this televising tracking dashboard, is this something that's kind of part of the overarching GIS plan? I know because we have, you know, my, my, my main goal is to get the township to the point where we can host our own records. And I know that OHM, Carla Wartman are supportive. There's been a big initiative to try to bring all the GIS. So does that fit in with this scheme?
Yeah, so we actually just had a meeting this morning. Um, we had a GIS update. Um, and we, and it was focused kind of on utilities specifically. Um, but we, Chris is definitely trying to get this, um, also that integrates for Silo. So part of the two things that we specifically wanted to move forward quicker and we were wanting to get with Joyce about it, um, maybe this week or next week was pulling two of the utility tasks out, which would be setting up the server and creating the, like, the structure of the GIS for utilities, which would also help, I'm sure, um, other aspects of, of what the township needs are. So right now, all the GIS information is OHM's server.
Right.
It's not ours for utilities. So we need our own server. Uh, we need all of our own users. So part of, of moving this forward would be to have OHM do that on our behalf through Chris's guidance. Chris is a lot more technical with talking about this. He probably should, but yeah.
There's a question about our own server, but moving it to, uh, uh, Ezri's cloud.
Yeah.
Okay.
Under our control.
Under our control.
Yes. So right now, we're kind of just borrowing OHM's.
Um, I'm sorry. So, so Matt, um, you said that we should have been doing this, um, regularly from the twenty teens to around twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, you know, we did do this. Um, I'm assuming that was on us, that we just should have continued to do this. I just wanna confirm that this is a normal thing. Um, the, the other thing is in early twenty twenty, when the pandemic was shutting down, we did a big project with you, Matt, to look at the sewer main.
You did, you did metering.
The metering? I thought we did, I thought we did a video, no?
Of the force main?
Of the force main. Yeah, we did, we did a force main assessment, which this isn't, that's a pressure pipe. So when we did the ARV at Parkland Plaza, we also assessed the force main condition. This is for gravity sewer. So this is everything that.
Okay, totally separate. Got it.
Yep, but you are, you are correct. Advanced Underground and other companies were constantly going in and televising. And yeah, I, I don't know exactly, Jessica, when, when it stopped, but I was probably, it's probably safe to assume sometime around the time Scott Martin retired, then we had a couple of interim, uh, directors. And then pandemic came and no one was really videoing at that time and it just never really picked back up. So.
Okay.
Um, and I mean, nothing's, uh, good news is Silo's got such a new system relative to infrastructure. Like, there's, like Brandon said, the word collapse and stuff, there's probably little, zero chance of collapse, but there is a lot of chance for root intrusion, um, INI, different problems that can, you know, over time build up, grease buildup. Um, I know we had an issue over F, outside of, you know, Metzger's area, um, last year. So, um, there's, there's definitely a need and it's more of just, I, I think trustee Mark said it really well, like just preventative maintenance, knowing what you have. And then on top of like having an architect or an engineer put time into writing a good SPAC and having a good thing, these are gonna lead to capital projects that Brandon's gonna identify and then prioritize the needs. And having video every, you know, that's less than five years old is really gonna, all you have to do is show the contractor the video and say, here's your segments that need to be lined. We have a GIS. Here's the videos that correspond to it. We need these segments of pipes lined. Here you go. And I mean, that, it's pretty hard to not bid that accurately. So.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions for you, either of you. This is the precedent to an ask for the contractor to do the work, correct? And is that something that's likely coming in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-four.
All right. And, um, is the deliverable, is the deliverable at the end of their work going to be cleaner, streamlined sewer pipes? Matt and, and Brandon?
So I mean, as, as far as.
Or is it, is it gonna be cleaning and scoping? Is it gonna be both product?
It's gonna be cleaning and vet and sucking out the contents when need be. And then also right following behind them would be the TV crew, cause that's when it's the most clean. So we get the best video. So that they'll be working in, um, they'll be working together. So as soon as it gets, um, it gets cleaned and factored out, the contents get sucked out, the TV crew will be coming right behind them.
Will this impact REUs?
In the, in the future, after, um.
The work is done, will, will we get better performance with respect to REUs? Because we're, when we flush our toilets, it's going downstream quicker, more efficiently.
No, so we'll be gaining REUs because when we do lining, I mean, stop the infill, inflow and infiltration, we'll stop treating gr- groundwater and stuff like that. And then with doing this, as we're gonna be proposing in the future with another meter studying, we can shore up that REUs that we have available.
Do we have any sense of the efficiency of our system with respect to REU increasing?
I'm not sure.
The, the metering, the metering study will tell us that, trustee riser, um, the last time we did metering, we did a preliminary metering, then we did some lining and then we did a post-metering. And we saw about five, six, seven hundred REU change in, in flow and infiltration during wet weather. So the peaks were shaved quite dramatically. I don't expect, because we found manholes that were literally submerged in wetlands and some other pretty big smoking guns. Those are fixed. I wouldn't expect that dramatic of a change, but over time, you know, pipes fail, um, things happen. So that's why this cleaning will really help find any of the low hanging fruit. And yes, I would expect overall, we would, we'll, we'll have a REU bump at the end of this, but not at the end of the cleaning. Yeah, Br- Brandon's right. Like this will identify where the capital projects are. So Brandon can then prioritize, work with Joyce on the capital improvement plan. And you're not just aimlessly lining things that are old. You're actually targeting the worst leaking pipes. So it's, it's really kind of a diagnostic to future capital work on your sewer.
And due to the relatively new, um, new system that we have here, um, you know, where I came from, Genesee County Water and Waste, they took care of a wide variety of cities and townships where this was done once every seven years. Um, they always televise every single foot of every pipe that they clean. Once we review this video footage, if it comes back that, that's not needed, that we needed video every single foot because it will be on the more expensive side than what we've been paying for before, cause we've only been spot TVing. But if the video comes back where we're not seeing a whole lot of troubled areas, we're not seeing a lot of things that indicate structural damage to the, to the piping, we can, we can not, we don't have to do it, like continuing after this five year contract. We don't have to continue to do it so often. Um, as the system gets older, we will want to do it more often. But this will give us a clear answer of what we're looking at now. And we can base off this going forward, what we actually need as far as TVing goes. We'll always need to do some cleaning each year.
So I, I know that one of the tasks is coming up with the probable cost, but what is like the range of what we might, you know, come back with, you know, the winning bid? What is the range of what we might be paying each year to video?
Yeah, um, so I believe we talked, I talked with Matt and Sally about this. Do you have those, um, estimates?
No, I don't. But I mean, somewhere around two to three dollars a foot to clean and televise. But I mean, I don't have the total mileage of, or footage of pipe, but that's what, kind of where we came up with breaking it up into fifths. Just so it was a easier pill to swallow. I think that televising and cleaning, I think the aim was, I, I, don't quote me, Brandon, but it was somewhere to keep it well under a hundred thousand annually, I think. And really just trying to target your, your worst areas, um, first. And some of them are gonna be tough to access. So this year, because you wanna get going on this in twenty twenty-four, there might be some clearing and brushing and tree trimming and things like that to get the equipment into where some of these manholes are. So we might save that for year two or year three. But I think we can really right-size this and that's part of our mapping, uh, task. We say five years, but maybe, maybe we do need to, you know, right-size the budget and, and chop it up into different, different chunks. Um, but we can really curtail this to whatever project or annual budget that, you know, Brandon feels is appropriate. But I would say on average, an average, average municipality of Silo size spending anywhere from fifty to seventy-five thousand a year on just sewer televising, cleaning and spot repairs.
And, and Matt, the tasks one through five, you've got it nearly forty thousand. And I, I was just kind of looking, looking through these tasks. I mean, that'd be what, like, I mean, two hundred hours of time? I'm looking at that right. So why does it take two hundred hours of time-ish to come up with a bid? When, when this is something customary that's done in every community and I'm sure there's, you know, you've done this for other communities too. Why does it take so much time?
Well, you guys aren't really, you're not set up to have, you don't have a, an existing contract out there. I mean, honestly, if you have or can find your previous contract and you guys are happy with what you've, how you've operated in the past, I think you don't need to do this work. Um, I think you could just make a couple of phone calls and get a couple of quotes. But the, I think what we're trying to do is really come up with an a la carte list. And whether it's unit price or time and material, we're really trying to create the program from scratch. Trying to get you guys a bid list of, so you can go to a contractor and not just say, hey, what is it gonna cost to take care of this, this issue over here? You really have kind of a, a gauge. So when Brandon comes to you in an emergency situation or even a non-emergency situation, we should be able to basically go to the contract and say, this is gonna be three days of cleaning and factoring that costs this. And there's no, I guess, less surprises. There's always surprises. But, um, there's also, I think, the heaviest lift for us is just sitting down with Brandon and going through a lot of his preferences with what him and Rich want to do and how they wanna tackle it. There is a lot of difficult to reach areas. So to trustee Mark's, uh, comment, we have to map everything out. And then on top of that, we have to show how the contractor is going to access each manhole and what easements and how they're gonna get there. There's probably some field time to walk some of the routes to make sure the trees aren't overgrown and don't need to be trimmed back so they can get a vector truck to where they need to do, or if they need an easement machine. Um, and then, um, we anticipate, and again, this is why I say we're doing it hourly. But if OHM is not needed, you guys get bids and Brandon and Rich can sit down and interview and make a recommendation and pick a contractor without OHM's assistance, then that's time that's not needed. Um, but we're obviously happy to be a part of that and we have experience with different contractors in the area and we know who's good and who adjacent municipalities use. But to your point, uh, clerk Flintoff, I mean, we can, we can definitely scale this back significantly. It's just, you know, what are you gonna get and what kind of product are you going to get? And what kind of contractor are you gonna get? And what, what, what's your, what's your contract shaped like? And this is pretty specific. This is not just sewer cleaning too. It's, it's for lead and copper hydrovacuum. So there's quite a bit of work. I know it probably doesn't seem like a whole lot, but legitimately, if you guys didn't wanna go through this process and spend this money upfront, you could probably pick up the phone, pick up the Yellow Pages, call a dozen firms and have them all give you a linear foot per, look, a, a dollar per lineal foot cost and go with the lowest and then see where that takes you. Um, that's an option. And I don't know how it was done in the past. I can't comment on that. Um, that is potentially how, uh, the former utility director, Scott Martin, did it. But this is kind of a more, I think, calculated. A more, I think, calculated way of doing it, but it's, it's really the board's option.
Thank you.
For your questions.
Just one, uh, you talked about a grants from Eagle, what kind of grants would they be and for what types of projects? Because.
State revolving fund loan money, if, if, if you were to put together a project plan and apply for low interest rate loans. Sometimes you get principal forgiveness, right now there is none for a community like SiO, but. Um, they would require PACP, MACP, the NASCO system. Um, and you can couple that with other projects that you might need to do in the future, whether it's the pump station or whatever, I think that Brandon, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. It's probably, probably what you were aiming at, so it's through Eagle. And right now, you, you aren't eligible because you don't have an SRF project plan. But it opens you up to being able to get one in the future if, if, you know, it becomes advantageous to do so.
Someone prepared to make a motion.
Well, I have a.
Sorry.
What I like is. We're having to create a new baseline. Because of the. The last five, six years where some of this stuff was just. I'm not done for that hole. I don't know. We need to do that. Because a comment was made one time, if. A major sewer break happens in the Jackson Road area. You couldn't find enough tanker trucks to take care of the problem until the sewer was fixed, we don't want that. Let's get a good plan in place like we used to have.
Yeah, we do, we've been working on the redundancy, um, with Joyce and OHM as far as, um, if that force main. Um, did have a problem in the future, or if it broke on the main sewer main, um, before the, the pump station itself. Um, and those are in the capital, um, improvement plan. Um, and they are quite a bit of money, so we will be looking to do the SRF. Um, in the future, um, we're looking at maybe next year. Putting all the, putting it all together and present it to Joyce. Um, and, and kind of getting that started, um, planned out, so we can. Um, make sure we have those redundancies in place. But absolutely, if you can show, um, that you are being proactive in cleaning your sewers. Um, when it comes to litigation. Um, we do have governmental immunity, but it also really helps if you have proof that you are actually being proactive and maintaining your sewers. Um, and so that is very important, and again, I guess, the, the big thing that I, I did see the contracts from prior to. Um, me being here. It's just your bare minimum sewer cleaning, um, and, and very just light TVing, only if Scott, um, reviewed something and thought. You know, a certain area needed to be done, is, is kind of what I gathered from, I'm looking at him and talking with Rich. Um, but this is a more in-depth. Um, like I said, every foot. To make an asset management plan, um, that is very detailed. With every single foot of, of TV, of every single foot of sewer main being critiqued and making sure that we're doing the best that we can to maintain it. Um, and again, um. This is more in-depth with the GIS, um, you can't. Just find anybody to do that kind of work, um, and this is gonna be very critical in the future, this is the way everybody's going. Um, to do their asset management, um, to record information and make it more feasible for field workers to understand what's going on in the field and have. Access to it at a few clicks of a button on a tablet or on a phone. Um, and so it's, it's. Again, like Matt was saying, there's nothing inherently wrong with just hiring a sewer cleaning company. And just sending them out there with not a great plan in place. In my opinion, I mean, that he, I would, I'd say, I, I want to reframe that, I think the style that they did was, was fine, I just think. Now we need to be more in-depth with actually getting, um, actual every footage of our pipe being done and, and actually. Form it into the GIS, so that's, it's more feasible for the field workers. Um, and then again, after this five years, you can reevaluate if it's necessary to TV everything. Um, and see how many years we can get away with not doing it, um, and just do the cleaning. Um, but that's, that's just kind of my opinion on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any big emotion?
I'm making a motion. So my motion is approval of OHM to create technical and contract specs for sewer cleaning and TV work, do we want to add? Do we want to add to that not to exceed?
I was gonna say, um, as set forth. In the January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, proposal by OHM. For options or tasks. One through seven, not to exceed fifty six thousand dollars.
Is that a friendly amendment? So, can I say, moved by Brazil, support by Riser? Oh, you didn't. Donna supported it, all right, moved by Brazil, support by Palmer, and that's a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in that case, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven zero.
Do we want to take a quick break before we go to our last item, or?
No.
Go through it, man, we. All right, okay, so last, I, last night, well, I just, I wanted to be sensitive to people's needs, but, um. So the last item is the one that we added, that's approval of one full-time deputy clerk position to. Replace one part-time deputy clerk position, and clerk Flintoff, this is your agenda.
Um, sure, yeah, I described this at the last meeting. Um, and had put it in the request in December twenty twenty three as part of the request we included in the proposed budget. Mentioned it at our last meeting because it's not in the proposed budget, so I wanted to bring it. Um, as a standalone item, uh, to the board here. Um, as I mentioned, um, you know, this has been a longstanding need, but something that's become more, uh, time sensitive. As Mary, um, has indicated her desire to roll back her hours. Um, it is, um, a request. Uh, to move from the budgeted thirty two hours a week to a full forty hours a week. So, um, the cost difference for a full year is twenty thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars. Um, salary benefits different, it is, um, enormously, you know, it's very atypical for a township to be as. Um, skeletal as we are in our clerk's office, um, I looked at a survey of five hundred. Um, clerk's offices, everyone with voters between ten thousand and twenty thousand as a full-time deputy, some are full-time elections directors. Um, so, um, certainly, while I appreciate, um, the twenty thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars. Um, is an additional expense, I think it's, um, an expense I would prioritize far and above many other proposed expenses. So I'm bringing this to you all, um, with the request. Um, for the board to authorize, that's the board's job, is to authorize compensation for deputies as we did for the deputy treasurer. Um, as we did for the deputy treasurer in August twenty twenty one. Um, we shared a job description, I know Donna worked with Diane Benson on that. Of course, ultimately, you know, the duties of the deputy treasurer are at the direction. Of the treasurer within her statutory duties as they are for the clerk. And deputy clerk, um, I'm asking for action on this tonight. Um, to have authorization by the board for a full-time, um, deputy, so that I can immediately start recruiting. Um, going out to the graduate schools, I think it's going to take probably two to three months to find somebody, most likely. Looking for somebody highly qualified, willing to work extremely hard, but, um, no overtime, it's an FLSA exam position. For seventy to seventy six thousand dollars a year, uh, preferably, preferably a SiO township resident. Uh, because I think that that's an important, uh, quality for this position, but of course not. Um, required to, so, uh, really asking for action tonight so that I can, um, start recruiting. And, um, would hope to have somebody in place by, you know, maybe May or June.
I have a question, a thought that I need to raise. We need, I believe, as a board personnel. Uh, we don't have a committee, I think we should have. But we got the list of everything this person's going to do. What are you gonna do?
So the, the job description is everything that the person might do. Um, and certainly, you know, the duties are what my duties are. Um, and certainly, as I, um, put there, um, assignments across these three areas. Um, will depend on the particular qualifications of the deputy clerk and how they complement those of other available township staff. I mean, Fran does public notices, we have an interim finance director, you know, we have different, um, staff that carry out a lot of the clerk's duties. Um, and so it's going to depend, and, and Donna, I, I, I'm gonna be recruiting across different fields, right? I mean, if somebody's, you know, got a degree in information sciences, that'd be amazing, if they're an accountant, that'd be amazing. They're a public administration, that'd be amazing. But all of those fields, you know, directly relate, um, I can't say that the township is. Um, the township is in need of. A lot of qualities, and I would hope that the deputy clerk is somebody that we have. Um, who would want to work for the township, um. For, for a long time, and I could personally use, you know, somebody with any one of those skill sets, I think it would, um, help move township forward.
The deputy has to be able to step into her shoes if she's incapacitated or out sick or something.
That's, so, I mean, that'd be very clearly stated as that.
I'm just kind of reflecting on that because, right, the deputy's job description. Just by the nature of the situation would be pretty broad and expansive, it would be. Pretty much everything that the clerk is doing too, because she has to be able to. In time, do all of them, and if Jessica isn't available.
And you're right, I, I didn't craft this around me, Jessica. I didn't craft this around, you know, the particulars. Um, you know, I crafted it around the position. And, you know, I think it's gonna depend on, you know, who, who I'm able to find as, you know, potential qualified candidate.
You know, just my only, I, for some, I'll work full-time, yeah, that sounds totally, totally agree with your point you just made, and. Yeah, I mean, I know you got a big level of work, I, I have no challenge, so whatever, my, my question would be, you've got an existing deputy clerk now.
Yeah.
So, do we have some type of official? Hey, I'm really stepping down, or something, I could see like, hey, I changed my mind, you know, all of a sudden I'm back, or, you know, I got a new person hired, so do we have it in writing? And then what's that attrition period look like, I guess it's just my question.
So it would be, it would be, the way I would see it, and, and Mary and I have talked, I mean, there, there'll be. Um, well, one, I need to find somebody to appoint, and then it's, you know, what, there's one deputy at a time, Mary spends. And a new one begins, period.
Yeah.
So Mary has offered to the board, if the board wants to, um, continue her appointment as newsletter editor. I mean, you would have to put in five to ten hours a week, something in the budget to support that.
That's what she wants to do, so, so.
She's offered to continue to do, that's separate from being deputy clerk.
Yeah, so her, so she wants to really diminish her time, she's got other things she wants to go do, newsletter, great. If we don't do that, I just suggest we just. I suggested we just, maybe we're jumping the gun on the newsletter, just pay her flat rate, say that way, she can say, hey, if you can get it done in ten hours, I guess I don't care, we pay you X dollars per revenue, what crank for them a year, right?
Whatever, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, whatever makes sense.
Whatever it is, Mary, Mary's, I think we all recognize as a tremendous public servant.
Yeah, she do a great job that way.
You know, works sixty hours a week when she needs to, but that's a separate and apart from the deputy clerk.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, that way it's easier for her and just. But yeah, I'm, I, if that's the case, as long as that's all worked out, and there's no conflation of, of that issue. So, I'm gonna be, of course.
Okay. Um, thank you. So. I think this isn't really discretionary, this is. An essential expense. And we, we need to support it. Um. You heard from David Reed earlier in the evening, who previously had been the deputy clerk. About his opinions regarding the need for a full-time deputy clerk. And I want to speak as a former clerk from two thousand four to two thousand eight. I see a need for the deputy clerk to be full-time. Um, the duties have changed substantially. Over the last twenty years, I can't believe it's been twenty years, but, um. You know, we now have same-day voter registration, requires more personnel to fulfill those obligations. We now have early voting. Eleven days before an election, I mean, that requires more. Personnel, so. I support this strongly. She has functioned with a part-time deputy for a long time. Everything is, is, we're getting busier and busier, and I think it's an essential expense. And Donna, I mean, you've had a full-time deputy. And.
For more than two years.
I just want to say.
Out comparison.
I know, I know the jobs are very different.
Very different.
But. The clerk position is indeed the busiest board position in the township.
Okay, it's at this point in time, election times, my gosh, she runs phenomenal election work. Uh, taking care of the need. It's, it's amazing, it's amazing, yeah, but when there's no elections. And we have financial staff, we hired Rebecca, uh. I, I just want to be sure that. The daughter is well spent.
Thank you. And I, and what I can say is, you know, I'm looking for. An extremely hardworking person who's extremely committed to public service. Um, you know, we work. Hardly, we work long, we work smart. Um, and, you know, again, I think that, you know, seventy to seventy six thousand dollars. For somebody with five to ten years of experience and advanced degree. And experience working in public service, what you're gonna get is a true public servant, and I will, you know, commit to. You know, getting somebody who is, you know, very. Well worth their salary and more. Um, it's, it's, um, you know, it's not a job for the faint part, it's not a job for somebody. Who's looked into cashing on OT, um, that's not even available, you know, we work fifteen hour days, I mean, it's. It's, it's work.
I'd like to hear from the township manager because there was a concern about.
Finished, there's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm glad you weren't finished.
So I know, Will, you and I've talked a bit and about this issue. And you've said you'd like to handle it in conjunction with an overall budget discussion. And I can see that point, I mean. Particularly if this was a discretionary choice, but I don't think it's discretionary, I think we're gonna have to do it. Whether we do it now or in three weeks or four weeks. I mean. Why not do it now? She is saying that. She needs more time, the advertising in the newsletter, the timing of that is. Significant. Why not respect what she's saying? And do it? That's what, so I'm in support of this. I'm done.
Okay, I didn't want, I want to make sure I'm not cutting out.
Wait, John's.
Well, yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to cut, doesn't matter, I know, I also want to hear from Joyce.
Cut off, John, and then.
Well, I, I'm not. My feelings aren't hurt that I'm cut off, I do want to weigh in when it's my turn, when it's my turn.
Okay, well, I mean, go to the township manager first, and then we'll go to trustee Riser.
Sure. Okay, so, uh, you know, I've. Heard comments tonight about, um, the budgeting process and, uh. The elimination of positions, and I think it's important to kind of put things in context so that everyone have a better idea of, of. What was proposed, what is proposed in the budget and the rationale. And it had really nothing to do with need in the sense that. Um, you know, I also support the fact that, um, the clerk may need to have a full-time position. I guess the one thing that came up as part of the budgeting process is, um, looking at the fact that we. We have not had a balanced budget, and. The budget that was going to be presented to you. Would, if I included everything, would not have been a balanced budget. And working with Plant Moran. The, uh, positions included in the budget. Uh, is estimated at about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then in addition to that, if you add the capital necessary to. Uh, look at the HVAC systems for the building, it was over a million dollars, um, over revenue, so. So that was really the driving force in terms of looking at um, what changes might be recommended. Um, I know that one comment came up related to the fire department and the three uh, positions there that was included. And um, what was not clarified is that right now, the fire department is waiting to um, submit an application for SAFAR funding. And if that occurred, uh, those positions, if approved, would actually be covered by a grant. And what my experience with SAFAR funding is that the grants normally are for like two years or three years. So that would be a benefit to the township. So instead of adding these positions in the general operating fund, which created again, a deficit situation in discussing that with the chief, uh, we talked about phasing the positions in the second part of the fiscal year, which to me made sense. And I think it made sense to him as well. So um, you know, getting back to the other positions, um, we did receive requests from uh, the clerk, um, the treasurer, we received requests through utilities um, from me in terms of a full-time position. And then there was one um, in in finance as well, including having the expense for the interim finance director. So basically, uh, what I did was actually uh, took those positions out of the general fund, thinking that as part of the discussion, certainly we can discuss what was taken out and discuss um, the rationale. And then, uh, thirdly, if there's an interest in putting something back into the budget, let's start looking at a balanced budget. So if you're gonna put something back in, let's take a look at taking something out so that we can maintain that balance going forward. So that was the rationale. Um, the other consideration with um, uh, Mary's position, I wasn't really clear what the fu- future is for the position, you know, whether it's ten hours or whether it's part-time but less than thirty-two hours. And based on whatever uh, the assumption is, you could be looking at one and a half positions. So I wasn't clear on that. And I think, again, that's something that needs to be flushed out, and I know the clerk and I had talked about that. Um, and then thirdly, I think the other consideration was with uh, the job description and whether the way the description is written, uh, if it might create some conflict, which I am not sure at this point if it does or not. Uh, and speaking with our attorney, um, it was stated to me that there was a question raised, but there was no opinion in that regard. And I think we just need to be clear on what the position will do. Uh, the other comment was that a job description is not necessary because it's covered by statute. So those are some of my comments related to the position.
That's the rise here.
Well, I I mean, again, I don't mind yielding, I interrupt enough myself, so if you wanna ask her questions, you don't need, no, no.
Go ahead.
No question.
Wait for you.
So so um, I'm gonna support going to a full-time deputy, whether we do it tonight at a vote or whether we do it in a March twenty-ninth at our budget meeting. I'm gonna support this. Um, but the question I have is the the HR, there's a salary recommendation that the board, and it's our responsibility to set salary, has like, are Aurora weighed in on the salary recommendation, or have you consulted with our HR person on that in that regard?
So I I requested input from Joyce and Aurora, who gave me input, which I appreciate. I also talked to our attorney um, on the salary consideration. I I didn't, and correct me if you have anything, Joyce, but I didn't hear anything back in particular. We didn't talk about that in particular.
Well, uh, yeah, in in speaking with uh, Aurora, again, I think there were still questions about the job description and just the range and everything. So that's something that I do think we need to talk about, yeah.
About about the range?
Yeah.
So Donna, okay.
So so like I say, I'm gonna, I support this in concept, but the but the devil's in the details and like.
So the seventy of seventy-six, you think is off?
I I don't know that it's off or not. I I I'm not saying it's too high, too low, or I I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, you know, with respect to the electeds and the officers, we have a compensation com- uh, commission that does all that. And now we have a new HR person, and I think they should have a role in 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 that in advising what that salary should be.
Sure, I and I and I I welcome that input, Joyce. I I really had gotten no input from anyone on the salary, um, in all honesty. Um, the proposal I had put forth was for one deputy clerk and then, you know, five to ten hours a week um, for communications newsletter editor. That was not included in the budget, and I I get that, respect that, Joyce. So so what I'm saying is, right now, what I'm proposing is one full-time deputy clerk, and it's on the board to figure out if and how to have a newsletter editor in the future. That's fine. It certainly wasn't to go to a one-point-five. Again, I wanna just acknowledge Mary stretching herself as she has been, staying on for as many hours as she has been, far past the point where she has wanted to. So I'm also trying to be respectful of her.
Mary is excellent.
Yeah, thank you. And Mary is excellent to work with him. So what I wanna say is, she has been putting in far and above more hours than she um, wants to be putting in. She is offering to continue to support this township. But but there's no fear of a one-point-five FTE.
So, yeah, so, yeah, this is.
It's just not what's going on.
Uh, and the other, my, so I don't know if we do up to seventy-three thousand or salary to be determined, or I don't know what the best way to 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 do that is. But but I also, my other point is, with respect to the uh, duties in the job description, uh, there, it it says, for board consideration at the so we're not voting on a job description tonight, correct?
I was asking you all to vote. So when I talked with Mariah and Jim on Friday, Aurora had suggested, um, you know, finding out, we really need a job description, you know, for a deputy. I knew we didn't. I confirmed with Mariah, we didn't. The reason I'm presenting a job description for you is because, one, we did that for the deputy treasurer. Two, I also think it's reasonable when I'm asking for seventy-three thousand for you to see the types of qualifications that I'm requesting. So this is somebody with experience, with an advanced degree. And so for that reason, I wanted to to share that, give some basis to set compensation.
Yeah, but that's, it's, but it's more, cause the duties are three, and the assignments are gonna be financial accounting and then records management and elections administration. And with respect to records management and elections administration, I I don't have any any question with that. But with respect to the financial accounting, given that we have a finance department, given that we have people who work on finance, given that uh, Joyce has responsibilities with respect to the uh, the finances. Um, I I I'm not comfortable, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this if it's a proposed job description unless that's been vetted um, again, by HR. And and what, I'm sorry?
Under the statutory duties of the clerk.
Yes, I don't have any forms of statutory duty. I don't have any, I don't have any.
But that's what she's saying in that.
Yeah, I don't have any, I, I, I'm all about the statutory duties, but this is specific things that I don't know have been, I don't know that there's a need to attach a job description.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, the the assignments across these areas would depend. I'm, look, it's gonna be hard to find somebody.
Yeah, but that's different. Finding someone is different than what their, what their, what their duties are going to be. And and if some of these duties infringe on other, I I I would want this to be vetted by legal.
They, they would, this has been vetted by legal.
I haven't seen that memo.
Oh, okay, John. So um, let me say something. This is, I'm not asking you to vote on the job description.
Okay.
I'm asked, what I described here was a job description, which, by the way, is my job description, these three areas. Which, by the way, means it's potentially the deputy clerks. I have no desire, I'm not going to surprise anybody. And and wouldn't it be amazing if there were a retired CPA who wanted to be deputy clerk and could plug into some of these things, doing elections and different things? So, one, I think we should welcome that remote possibility. Two, I I would just say what I'm asking for is the board's approval of a full-time position. When I put seventy-three, it could be seventy-three, I'd also be comfortable saying with a range of seventy to seventy-six.
Or up to, or to.
Uh, seventy, seventy-six, so we get some sort of a range depending on.
I'm gonna support you there, I really am.
Do you like the seventy to seventy-six?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this on concept and it, I I it's salary range up to seventy-three thousand dollars or, I I I, you know.
Recommend.
I don't have a recommendation, because I haven't, because I haven't, because I haven't, I haven't done the comps. And and I haven't, it hasn't been looked, run past our our HR person, so I'm not gonna.
It has, it has been run past. I haven't asked for a direct comparison. I'll tell you where this sits in our authorized positions. Is it set about, you know, it's about like two-thirds, seventy, I'd say it's probably in the sixtieth to seventieth percentile of salaries at the township.
I just propose this, because I understand that Jessica wants to go and get somebody out there. Let's, sooner you get out there, sooner you're gonna find the people. She doesn't wanna select one candidate, she'd like to look at ten, or whatever it may ask that she is. Totally get that. So I think, yeah, let's go. Why don't we do all the other things that are open, just say, I'll do some of your amended friendly amendment language, whatever the heck you guys call it. You guys know, this is not my, not my way, my failure. Why don't we just say, subject to the approval of job description, subject to the approval of the pay rate by the HR manager, by the HR person or our manager, we can approve. So let's just get that stuff.
Well, the job description is, as as Jessica pointed out, that's not really something that we approve.
I mean, we, we. Anything, if if there's anything that is outside of the purview of clerk, and there's not, then great, it's it's, it's fine. Maybe, maybe the only thing is just subject to uh, the the pay rate.
Job description to be.
Review by HR.
With the job description to be determined.
Of course it is. But the job description is to be determined because we don't know who the person is.
No, I understand that, but.
Right, I mean.
There are some things set forth on the duties that I would wanna have vetted, vetted.
Like, I mean, I mean, John, if if, for example, I mean, I mean, this the, these are just descriptions of possible duties that could be assigned to a deputy clerk.
And if that's the understanding, if if that's the understanding that we're, that's fine.
That's, that's, that's.
Possibilities?
That's what I'm stating, John.
But we've got, so it's like support to finance department and 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 I guess.
A lot of deputy clerks are backup payroll, backup AP. I mean, if they have those skills, that's what they do. That is very normal.
That doesn't mean they get the authority to that job. She's just saying it's, it's a possible.
Right, I mean, the clerk is the, the clerk is the only one who has the authority to make entry into the journal of the ledgers. I mean, we know this, like, I'm, you know, technically the accountant. I'm, I'm not surprising anyone. I'm being clear about, one, what my job is and by extension, what the deputy clerk's job is. Now, again, I'm looking for a a hard-working public servant with an advanced degree. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to put in the range seventy to seventy-six.
John, let's just do it, subject to HR, the HR manager, HR and the manager approving it unless it's done. You you can uncover it, so it's, it's just what Jessica is responding, great. If they need to tweak it a little bit, let's get it going.
Mark, can you, I'll, I'll take, what is your salary?
I say, subject to approval of the job description, the pay rate of the HR, uh, by the HR manager, by the HR person and the manager. I don't, we call the HR person, human resources person and the manager. And then I'd say, in terms of um, existing deputy clerk, whatever her new role is going to be, that should just be subject to whatever we're gonna do in the in the budget.
That's a totally different question. There may be no role. I mean, that's.
I don't think you should roll that into.
Okay, they need to, okay, they're fine. It's something that, that way she can get going and we can figure out these last little things here by the people she figured out. Our manager and the HR person, because I don't know.
Yeah, well, the job duties are already set under statute for the clerk, so.
If somehow somebody tells you there's something.
Need to focus on the salary.
So, so let's just get the one.
Point. So you're saying to authorize the conversion, the one thirty-two hour, to authorize.
Oh, no, that's true, Donna, just like the treasurer, deputy treasurer does what the the treasurer does by statute.
Basically, so the total salary of seventy thousand to seventy-six thousand, subject to, what's your language?
Uh, 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 subject to review and approval of the HR manager and our township manager.
Okay.
Uh, and then the job description, just a, I don't, check off or whatever you wanna call it.
Determined? Could, could it be, could it, could it be?
Sure, sure, with with duties, with specific duties.
To be determined?
To be determined.
Sure.
Um, how about by the clerk in conjunction with the board?
And town, and and township attorney.
Yeah, obviously, John. And the township attorney has said.
Township board, it's our authority.
I, in consultation, okay.
Yeah, and John, the township attorney just said, Jess, don't present a job description.
Okay.
That, that, and they didn't even put that in a memo, but but the confusion is.
I don't have the luxury of that legal advice.
Right.
And I'm not happy about that, obviously, because where I'm from, if if there's legal advice, everyone gets it so we can all rely on it.
Sure, this was just a phone call. And so, but I I did, I was trying to bring this job description because.
Yeah, and you know what? I'm taking offense to this because it seems like you're attacking the clerk.
No, I'm supporting this.
Yes, it does, because the clerk has statutory duties and deputy clerk under her is divided by the statutory duties. Now, we set the salary.
And we set the hours.
Well, no.
Well, the salary goes along with the hours, but, you know. We could just set the deputy clerk overtime.
Just do it, Jess.
For a total salary of seventy to seventy-six thousand plus benefits. Subject to the review and approval of the HR generalist and township manager. I'm assuming the final salary, that would be intent. And with duties to be um, determined by the clerk in collaboration with the board of trustees.
Actually, it's a scope of duties.
The scope of duties. Are you comfortable with that, Joyce?
Um, sure, or can, can I be a part of that too?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
For sure, okay.
All right.
That's you.
Okay.
So, so we got.
Of duties to be determined by clerk in collaboration with the manager and the board of trustees.
Yeah.
How's that?
I was a part of that motion.
Okay, so who made the motion?
Uh, I made the motion.
Mark, you made the motion.
Riser supports.
Riser supports. Before we vote, I would like to say something.
Well, why not the manager and the attorney? Because the attorney's gonna know what the statutory duties are.
Yeah, guys, if we need the attorney, we'll bring in the attorney. I will just.
I don't think the board knows what this.
What that's, they have demonstrated that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Will. What would I say?
All right, well, I I wanted to respond, I I've had a lot of thought about this over the past few days. Um, first of all, I wanna respond to some things that have been said about what happened last week when we were putting together the agenda. Because I think there's misunderstanding or um, something, I'm not sure. But the way that I understood our rules of order to opt me is that we had Wednesday at noon deadline for submission of items for the agenda that people wanted to put on the agenda. And then that, under the rules of order, the supervisor and the township manager were to will look at all of those submitted items, assemble the agenda, um, make decisions based on, um, you know, what they they thought made for a good agenda, and and they might weigh different factors in that process. But there wasn't sort of automatically something getting on the agenda necessarily. Well, it's, this particular item wasn't presented at noon on Wednesday.
It was.
If, well, please, can I have a turn to speak, please? I, cause a lot of people have said a lot of things about this. I would like to represent my understanding of what happened. People may have a different perception, but this item was not presented as an agenda item at noon on Wednesday. What we had was a blank with a title. So all we had was this title, approval of one full-time deputy clerk position, nothing else. No other details, no job description, nothing. And so I was waiting for the rest of the agenda item to populate. I wasn't automatically saying, oh, you can't put this on because it didn't make the Wednesday deadline, but nothing materialized. And I thought, well, is this even gonna happen? I mean, we don't have anything. And so at, um, you know, Thursday, we were coming up on our deadline for posting the agenda. And both Joyce and I had commitments at the end of the day, so we actually posted the agenda earlier than usual. And it turned out Jessica was counting on that last hour, I guess, to populate the agenda item. So the agenda got published, it didn't have um, this agenda item, cause there was no agenda item. There was just a title. That's all there was. So there's nothing for me and nothing for the township manager to evaluate and determine whether it was ready for the agenda. So that's, that's. for the agenda. So that's that's what happened. It wasn't, you know, somebody, you know, it wasn't some decision based on the content of the agenda item, it was a decision based on the lack of content of the agenda. So I just also wanna say, I'm not opposed to a full-time deputy where I mean, I felt like there were some unanswered questions. So it wasn't, i- if if I had been called upon to evaluate whether this was ready for consideration, I would have had questions about whether it was ready, even if I had the fully formed agenda item, which I did not. But that's the, that's the situation that we faced last week. We did not have enough information. All that I was able to access was, um, Joyce presented me with a draft of the job description. And that draft job description, Joyce said she was reluctant to share with me because she had been asked by the clerk not to, which raised sort of an alarm, because even though we've had references to how this has been shopped around and brought to different people for review, most of us got the job description at three-thirty yesterday. So we haven't had very much time to evaluate this, to answer questions, to gather data. I was still gathering data, gathering information an hour, an hour before we met. I was gathering more information. That's when I learned that the job description needed to be referenced in the motion, and that, in fact, the job description is sort of irrelevant because that is not really a decision for us to make.
Correct.
The, and so a lot of the alarm that I had been experiencing about the job description was sort of misplaced. It's it's just, it's not really a question for us. What we as a board can decide is how much time, really, the position can be. So it really is a question for us whether it's full-time or something less than full-time.
Right.
And um, we can decide the salary. That's really all we can decide.
Correct.
Okay, so listen, we got the motion in 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 place. Do we do the roll call on that now?
Well, the other thing that is a question that's hanging out there still is this question about what happens to Mary. And I guess we've gotten, we've gotten some more information about that tonight, and I guess we will deal with that in the budget process. I'm a little uncomfortable voting on on changing this position with the understanding that Mary is moving into something else that we haven't really figured out.
Or nothing, or nothing.
Already in the news, doing the news.
She think they're moving into something else or moving to nothing? I'm I'm paying that.
I understand. All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, that's still a question that's hanging out there, and I think it's a little, it's just uncomfortable to approve this, knowing that we're moving Mary out of this position, but we don't really have a plan for what happens with Mary.
Mary has offered to support this township as long as and in whatever capacity the township is willing to to have her.
I think that's very admirable.
We understand that there is no position on deputy clerk.
And so it's admirable of Mary, and I don't wanna, you know, imply that there's any downgrading of Mary at all. But I just, you know, it's a concern that we don't have that question, we don't have.
We'll figure it out during the budget process. We got time to go figure that out.
I guess so.
So let's get to the motion.
And I wanna acknowledge too that, you know, um, I'm with Joyce on the balanced budget and completely committed to that when we get into deliberations.
All right, if that's, if that's.
Friggin', Will, I will say.
And and no matter what the budget needs to be, that would be one thing we wouldn't cut.
Mary was kind enough to send us her email, and and she closes with, uh, I look forward, she's talking about stepping back and taking a supporting role, and look forward to continuing to edit the newsletter and maintain the website. So we'll, there'll be a role for Mary if she wants it, and that's something we'll have to talk about, how many hours in the scope.
Right, right, and I put something forward, it's not in the proposed budget, that's okay, it's just, I'm just saying that we'll figure it out. These are two different questions.
But not unrelated. All right, yes, let's let's call the roll on the motion. If you can read the motion again, I think that would be helpful.
To authorize the conversion of one thirty-two-hour-a-week deputy clerk position to one full-time deputy clerk position, and to authorize an additional twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars a year from general fund one-on-one to fifteen clerk for an increase in salary and benefits for a total salary of seventy thousand to seventy-six thousand, subject to review and approval of the HR generalist and township manager, semicolon, and the scope of the duties to be determined by the clerk in collaboration with the manager and the board of trustees, period.
I want to include the township attorney with, because.
That's fine, if everybody, I'm happy, I'm happy.
If they fall under the scope of deputy clerk.
All day long with everyone. It is overkill, and I will include township attorney.
Well, we we like overkill.
Made the motion, is it?
Is that okay for Zoe?
Are you comfortable with that?
Down seconds.
Yeah, yeah, and Riser's support, yeah.
No, I'm just, it's an amendment, I'm just making sure.
Yes, yes.
Roger.
Okay, so it's a heavily accepted amendment. Um, with that, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoft, yes. Brzeo?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
That brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the public board trustees. Is there anyone present? Yes, I see someone present who would like to speak. Please come forward.
Pam Boyd, Stilisai, where is it? How many of you see, have seen a um, a residential sewer line video? Oh, impressed. Uh, they're very interesting. I've seen hundreds, our office has seen hundreds. And um, it, there's a lot of information that you can acquire from a sewer line video, and it's amazing what people will put down their toilets. So I I'm really pleased to hear that SIO is going to get this this process. I think it's important for the health of our sewer system going forward. I also wanna thank Chris and Brandon for the heavy lift that they have done coming into SIO Township along with Joyce. Um, you guys have done an awful lot to help better us, and um, a couple of us residents really notice all that you're doing, and we we really appreciate it. So that's my public comment. Thank you.
Hi there, Pat Stein, longtime resident. Um, quick question. This was with the agendas tonight on the table. Does anybody wanna claim this? It's like a proposal for a um, sidewalk in the uplands for a total of, well, half a million dollars almost. Anybody wanna claim it?
That's not related to tonight's meeting. Is that, is that from the sidewalk meeting you had with JCSI, Will?
That's the thing that was referred to at the last meeting.
It looks like it.
Yeah, it it looks like it from yesterday, but that's the thing.
Last board meeting?
Are there more copies? I don't.
They're related with the agenda on the table. Does that look familiar, trustee Riser? This is your other copy, you'll find right now.
That's the thing that was discussed at the last meeting, where people were asking, how much did it cost to produce? So that's that, that's the one page, uh, one pager that OHM produced.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a done deal, this past history?
No, absolutely not. That was an idea that was um, partially formed. It exists nowhere in any court action.
Oh, this is what OHM did?
Yeah, right, this is what we were talking about at the last meeting when people were saying how much did it cost?
But we didn't get this last week. Anyway, thank you, Pat, for pointing this out. Sorry to interrupt.
Um, so, uh, Donna put four copies of this quarter, fourth quarter reports on the table tonight. Um, is there any reason these reports can't be in the packet for those at home?
We'll, we'll upload them.
A minute ahead of time. It'd be nice when you review the packet, so when you attend meetings, you can follow things, but when the public doesn't see something like this, what, you know, till after the fact, it'd be nice for them to have an option to comment on them tonight. So if it was in a packet, that would have been really helpful. I mean, Donna, you're full-time, your deputy treasurer's full-time, why does it have to be at the meeting starts?
I would suggest, your question is well-made, but I would suggest that at some time you people come in and see what our days are. We do our best.
I'm not following you. It was not ready.
Do our best to be timely. Sometimes it doesn't work.
That's surprising. It never appears to be.
You're not here, so you don't know.
And.
This isn't meant to be a.
I want to remind the board, the clerk is asking for twenty thousand dollars. You got that, right?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know. And trustee Riser, to tell the clerk you didn't see that in the memo, basically, we're telling her she was not being truthful. That was offensive, not bad.
No, I didn't have the, I didn't have the benefit of legal advice that she did, and we should all have it. That's my.
The, so her word of mouth is not a.
This is meant to be a time to hear from Pat Stein.
Yes, you're right, but, sorry.
Pat, please finish.
Oh, absolutely. And supervisor, I want you to know that when you go into a full explanation as to why something didn't happen, like, why something didn't make an agenda or something like, when you go into such an detailed explanation, we do get the impression that you're speaking an alternative truth, for lack of a better word. So, and Donna, are you you continue to not disappoint in the way you do not support other women?
Say your pardon.
Oh, absolutely. How many times has the clerk brought something to this meeting, and you right off the bat turn to her with an outrageous question like, Flintoff, what do you do? I felt that's the impression you, Donna Palmer, treasurer, what do you do? Thank you.
Did you wanna make a comment? So, in this meeting remotely, who would like to make a comment?
Uh, Rob Pattinson and John, John and Greg.
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, SIO Township president. I made a mistake earlier tonight, I apologize. Uh, it turns out that four thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents was charged in February for December work by Foster Swift. So we're we're not quite at two months in a row. Um, thank you, trustee Riser, for letting the board know that I had raised my hand, and thank you, board, for allowing me to ask the question. Um, I had a knee-jerk reaction when I read the agenda packet about um, things not going out to bid. And and Brandon's and Matt's explanation and Chris's explanation and Joyce's explanation um, really uh, put me more at ease with that. I'm still not comfortable with things not going out to bid, but the rationale did make a lot more sense. Um, trustee Riser, uh, I have a lot of respect for you, and I have admired a lot of the things you've done on this board and other committees. But tonight, I was extremely disappointed in you when you look at um, clerk Flintoff, and you tell her, I haven't seen that memo. Um, Donna said, you're, or uh, um, Pat said, uh, you're accusing her of speaking untruths. My impression of that is you basically called her a liar, and that is not good enough. You are better than that, and uh, of all the people at this table, the clerk has the most credibility uh, with us uh, residents for telling the truth. There are some on this board who go into long explanations about why something didn't go into an agenda packet that I frankly don't believe. And even if what the supervisor said was true, that's not how a leader works. A leader checks in with the person that that submits something for the agenda. A leader goes the extra mile to do it, even if you don't like the person. And that is, again, total abandonment of what the duty of a leader. And Donna, uh, treasurer Palmer, uh, I will remind you that when you say there's no comparison between the deputy clerk and the deputy treasurer, I will absolutely agree with you and remind you that your deputy makes a hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and forty-eight total, but a hundred and ten thousand dollars is your deputy cl- treasurer. Thank you.
Sex? I, can I, can I say something in response to Rob's, uh, I'll wait later.
Yeah, please.
All right, Jonathan.
Hi, good evening. Just get my notes straight here, one second. Uh, Joyce, thank you so much. You've made such a difference so far. Your contributions are very much appreciated by the community. Uh, Mark, uh, thank you for your voice of leadership this evening in the um, discussion around the deputy clerk. Um, it was a voice that was sorely lacking from some of the other members at the table. And Jillian, thank you for standing up for what is right in terms of that discussion and um, standing up for what's right and the woman who is being attacked. Um, whereas Donna, on the other hand, continues to show her moral finger shakings at others. The fact that you could ask the clerk, or say to the clerk that her pick had the same job description as her, like, what are you gonna do? Coming from somebody who hasn't done anything for thirty years and has relied on the same deputy making a hu- over a hundred K a year is rich and should be embarrassing, but apparently isn't. And Will, another long tirade to get, try to get yourself out of trouble, try to get yourself out of the uh, I tried to screw Jessica again and the keep her off the agenda as you've done so many documented times in the past. Uh, interesting, nice long description. And Jessica, I'm sorry that you have to go through this to get a few hours added to FTE. All the uh, accusations and and charges to your credibility, like you're trying to sneak something in, you know? This is coming from the group that said, hey, let's all start over, let's try to, you know, give everyone the benefit of the doubt. Well, not you. You don't get the benefit of the doubt, not once from these people. And so, uh, again, why I am thanking uh, Mark for his voice of leadership tonight. Uh, it just, I I mean, come on, you're, you guys are spending your time and our time turning over stones for some people and glossing over boulders for others. It just, the 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 ongoing discrepancy in how you treat different members of the board is is, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of our focus, and it's it's just, it's depressing. I really wish you guys would stop making such a big deal out of these things and give folks the resources they need, move on to the more important discussion topics. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Anyone else?
No.
That was it? Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
And I, I'm gonna support it, but I, I just wanna say that, I just, I just wanna say, uh, I did not call Jessica a liar. I'm not saying she's telling untruths. I just don't know what the question posed was and the response was with respect to duties that might impact what we assigned our manager Joyce Parker to do by way of her job description. That was, that was the, the line of my inquiry. I supported this motion, I said I'd be supporting it, and I I seconded it and I voted for it. So I don't see this, I don't see my, my dialogue during my deliberation as not being supportive of the clerk with respect to her adding a full-time deputy currently paid. Thank you, I would support your motion to adjourn.
Okay, so we have a motion by Brzeo, support by Riser. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned at nine fifty-one.